Okay, it is 6:00 PM on March 22nd, 2022. I'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Water Commissioners for the Ware River Water System. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting this evening? Seeing none, we move to the first item on our agenda, which is to consider approval of the minutes of February 3rd, 2022. I'm prepared to move. Liz and Bill?
Yes.
I'm ready.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion through the minutes dated February 3rd, 2022.
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved, and I should have noted for the record that the Commissioners participating in the meeting this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey, and myself, Joe Fisher. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of an agreement with Environmental Partners Group, Inc. for engineering services associated with Manomet Avenue, Planters Field Lane, and Thaxter Street Water Main Improvements Projects for the Ware River Water System. I believe we've got Russ Tierney and Kathy Riley here to present the proposal. Actually, I do not see Kathy. I only see Russ. Not that you're not enough, Russ, but is Kathy going to join us, Tom?
I believe she is. So if you could probably start with Russ and I will get ahold of Kathy.
Oh, well, actually, I'd rather just wait a minute so that she knows what he covers.
Okay. Hold on one second.
Yeah, sure. Okay, Russ, what is around your neck?
Sorry, I did my best. I just got out of practice early to come to the meeting and I had my lying gear on and I threw a sweater on and now I notice you can see it.
Just what, I thought it wasn't, I thought you were wearing an ascot.
It actually looked like one.
I was really impressed that you were, you know.
So I'm coming into this conversation late, but Russ, that would be a good look. An ascot, I love it. She's on her way.
Okay.
It's cold out there, that's all I have to say.
Okay, okay.
The cross season has started, huh, Russ?
That's right. The best season in the world.
Absolutely.
I know, I think soccer parents may disagree with you, but we'll discuss that another time.
I'm off that.
She was just getting to her computer, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, it's okay.
How is everybody doing? Good? Everybody good?
We're doing well. We're enjoying the water that you're providing us, so.
Did you see that? I swam the pond today and it was like, looked like the ocean today, aqua pond. The wind was blowing so hot, it was like causing white caps and I've never seen that before on the pond.
Aquapond.
It was pretty interesting.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah. I should have started taking a video, but you know, in the middle of something.
Was anyone sailing on the pond?
No, but I'll tell you, you probably couldn't today, absolutely. You know, even though you're not supposed to be, you probably couldn't.
That's right.
There were, I have to say, there were good six-inch caps. They were pretty impressive, actually.
Wow.
That was over falling milk today. That thing's about to overflow. We pulled another thing out of that to keep that going down.
Yep.
Amazing. It's good. Good to have all that water.
Hi Kathy. You better unmute yourself. There we go. Great. Good to see you. So we are now going to have our discussion of the proposed agreement with Environmental Partners Group. So I think Russ, you'll lead, and then Kathy, please fill in the gaps where needed.
So like every other design contract we have with the environmental partners, we're looking to do some design work on a few streets that we want to do in the future. Really trying to get ahead of this. Instead of always playing catch-up with the streets, I want to get ahead of it. So one of the biggest ones is Manomet Ave. I spoke with the Town Hall on numerous occasions and their plan is to resurface Manomet Ave and like FY '25. Manomet Ave is a mile long, so we don't want to use up all our money in a year. Like, you know, we had to do, we had to use a lot of money to do Atlantic Ave, so I'd like to do Manomet Ave in three phases, two or three phases. So what I have environmental partners doing is they're going to design the entire street, then break it up into three phases for bidding purposes, so we can slowly go up the street and do other work at the same time. So over the next two to three years, we'll get Manomet done. Planters Field Lane is on the report from Environmental Partners. Even though it's still a draft report, I've been picking streets off of that report. Planters Field Lane is one street that they recommended very early in stages to upgrade to an eight-inch, new eight-inch main. So I have that being designed for that. And Manomet Ave was actually another one that's on that list because it'll give us a second quote-unquote trunk line down the entire length of Man Tasked Ave. In cases of break on Man Tasked Ave, a larger main on Manomet will help keep the end of Hall up and running. So basically, that's the two things that are on this design work. The other thing that is on this design work is the end of the end of Thaxter Street. There's actually two mains. It's not any design. It's just going to be in the, when we do the bid, to abandon one of the mains on Thaxter Street before DPW pays it because it's AC, it's old, and it's unnecessary. There's another brand-new eight-inch, well, a newer eight-inch main on the opposite side of the street. So we'll just tie whatever needs to be tied over to that and abandon the AC. So when it's paid by the Town Hall, we won't have any issues when they pay that whole street. That's basically what it is.
Can you discuss the timeframe on when this work will be starting and be completed?
This work will be started as soon as you give us the okay and this work will be completed by June 30th. It'll all be designed, so then we can put it out to bid for the fall.
Okay, and you're confident within that time schedule?
Yes, oh, absolutely, yes, yes.
And the cost, the contract I know provides for no greater than $125,000? Is that your realistic expectation? Or are you expecting, in other words, are you expecting it to be close to the $125,000 or much lower?
It will be close to it because I think Manomet is going to take a lot of work to get that design properly and do a lot of borings down there and make sure we have the subsurface, you know, investigation done well. So and there is some, there may be some ledge on Planters Field Lane. I don't think it really starts until you take the left onto Wompa Tuck, but we want to make sure that's done well because that's also going to tie into the new main we do for the school. So we're kind of working our way backwards to the school, so that's, that has to be done, you know, very carefully.
And is this amount in the water company budget right now?
It is in the capital budget, yes.
But it is, and the amount is consistent?
125, yep.
And it's for the current fiscal year, is that, am I correct?
The design work is of the current fiscal year, then the actual construction will be FY '23.
Got it. Kathy, is there anything you wanted to add on the contract?
No, this was pretty straightforward. The engineering is exempt from Chapter 30B as far as bidding. You can get quotes, but you can also go with someone like EPG who's familiar with the water system and the different work that Russell's been doing. So I think it was pretty straightforward.
Okay, great, thank you. Liz Klein, questions or comments?
Excellent. Thanks, Russ, and thank you, Kathy. So the, will EPG help define the scope for the next phase? Is that part of this process?
That's not in this contract. The next contract will be specifications and design in the bid process. So that'll be a different contract. I just want to get this design work done because we have, we have the money to do just the design and then the next step will be the construction in the building.
Okay.
Because I really need to look at the FY '23 capital budget. There's a few moving parts in it right now. And if we may not be able to do anything on Manomet, but we will have a design, we may not be able to do any construction on it next year. But that also will play into Hall's final list.
And in the scope, there's permitting and bidding assistance, correct?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. You're right, Liz. I'm sorry. Yes, permitting and bidding is in there, but not construction.
Okay, okay. So when do you expect the next phase, the construction?
There is no construction we want to do starting July 1st, but then the other, hopefully August 1st. But so I did put June 30th on there as a deadline, but EP is pretty confident they can have this done in about a month. So we may be bidding it sooner than that to start July 1st, but I wanted to give enough time so that we didn't hide their hands in anything and give us time to make sure we had the funds.
Right, okay, great, thank you.
It's also contingent on the town meeting vote. That's the other thing, on the warrants.
I'm not sure I understood that comment.
But we have a warrant up right now, so we have to leave the town meeting to vote that warrant for FY '23 money. So that's about point seven million.
So but this contract is not contingent on that.
No, that is not. This is money this year.
Yep. Oh, got it, okay. Bill Ramsey?
Great. No additional questions, thank you.
Let me make sure. So Russ, I just want to follow up on what I, I think I understood Liz's comment to be and your response. So this contract requires the engineer to assist in helping to obtain all necessary license permits and approvals. So if the project, let's say, doesn't happen for another 18 months, will there be additional money to EPG to work on those permits? Or does this contract cover the permitting for work that will not be done until for another year and a half?
Contract covers the permitting if we do the bid. So the permits usually aren't done until we award the bid or prior, you know, just prior to that. So that may be something you save on the $125, Joe. We may not use all the $125 if we don't do that street. We are definitely doing Planters Field Lane. That's definitely going to go out to bid. And then I have two other streets that we pulled together last week that they're putting a contract together now for that may jump over instead of Manomet.
Right, where I'm going is that, so if, whenever the the actual implementation of the project begins, am I correct that there will not be an additional fee charged to the town for getting the permits and approvals for that project?
No, it's all in this contract. Yes, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question, Joe. Yes, you're correct.
Okay, got it, great. Although I don't see anyone else, I will ask if there are any members of the public with comments or questions on the Environmental Partners Group agreement. Seeing none, I'll accept a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Environmental Partners Group, Inc. for engineering services associated with the Manomet Avenue, Planters Field Lane, and Thaxter Street Water Main Improvements Projects for the Ware River Water System in an amount not to exceed $125,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the Fifth Amendment to the agreement with Suez Water Environmental Services, Inc. for the operation and maintenance of the Ware River Water System. Russ, we'll turn this over to you.
Well, during the first year and a half of operations, a lot of things came up with the plant. A few things that probably weren't clearly identified to any of us during the process. We were 100% convinced that, you know, we would need another O&amp;M tech slash operator slash mechanic. Some of the stuff that is being subbed out by Suez as part of the MRAM is, I'm not MRAM, I'm sorry. As part of the maintenance cap, the M cap, is stuff we could probably do in-house. So instead of paying subcontractors, we all sat down and worked through this and decided it was better to add an operator to the mechanic side in the plant side to do some of the mowing, do some of the landscaping work, some of the painting in the plant, some of the stuff that is being subbed out at this time to subcontractors. And it would really benefit everybody if we could have this extra person to help out with these tasks. So the cost to us would be $151,907.45, which we did put into the FY '23 operating budget, is part of the budget this increase. So approval of the budget approved from you guys would put this in motion. Again, it just, it's going to really help make the plan much better than it already is.
Russ, I'm not sure I understood something. I thought I heard you say that this was work that was going to be subbed out. Now we're going to have an employee do it, is that?
Some of it's subbed out right now, Joe, but there is work that, that is just not getting, we can't get to because it's just not enough time in the day. There's some painting we want to do on the outside plants. There's some other things we want to do and this, this is better than subbing it up. This is bringing it out as well, complete control over it.
Yep, Mike, I got it, but so the, is there a net cost to the town that it would be the employee's cost minus what we would otherwise have paid a contractor?
No, because this person will be full-time. The contractors, we bring in a part-time, so this will cover that, plus give us that person for other, other things like extra painting of hydrants, an extra work in distribution. So it's going to be kind of a floating person that helps everybody out.
Oh, and I understand, but will there then be a reduction in our expenditures for the contractor, whatever?
Because we know how someone is. Yeah, yes, you are correct. So then that M cap money that we're spending on somebody to clear some of the easements will now go towards more maintenance work on the plant, new pumps and a few other things. So yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Got it. And are you satisfied that Suez is still honoring the bid and contract process that we initially went into? In other words, that I want to make sure that we're not going down a slippery slope that someone does a bid and then six months later, oops, they forgot to add somebody and then another six months, somebody else. So I just want to make sure we're, we're making sure that our, the person who won the bid is actually respecting the terms of the bid that they want.
Yeah, yeah, Joe. One of the things that Tom and I have looked at with Suez as a group is there were certain things, again, that, that no one would have known about that weren't disclosed. And these are the things we're talking about. That even everybody that walked through would never have known some of these things would not happen. So it's absolutely a disclosure thing, in my opinion, and it warrants definitely another person.
Okay. And the proposed Fifth Amendment to the agreement, and you're not allowed to take the Fifth on this, but the proposed Fifth Amendment has a, what it calls a revised Exhibit F, which is the staffing plan, which is the last page of the document we have. Could you just highlight, I don't know if you have the original Exhibit F, or at least tell us what is revised on the Exhibit F so that we know where it was before and what the change is?
Oh, revised. I just emailed it over to everybody. I can, but that's okay. I can share the screen. I think I can, can I?
That would be great. Here we go. I see the.
All right, can you see that? So this is not Exhibit F, Joe. This is my cleaned-up Exhibit F for that we used in some presentations and things like that.
Right.
But this is definitely how the Ware River Water System is set up right now organizationally-wise. This person would go see where it says the O&amp;M techs in the plant.
Yep.
That person would fall into that scenario. So right now, there's five, would be a six person.
Okay.
And they would also be across, they would also cross with the maintenance tech. So the person will have a, hopefully have a Treatment 1 license to be able to do some work at the plant and then also move over and work with maintenance under the maintenance side to do something.
Okay. While you've got the screen sharing, can you pull up the agreement? Which.
Page 105?
Yes. What you have before us in the amendment, all right?
You know, what we have in the amendment, you mean? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Good. Is that it? No, that's not it. Hold on.
Just don't send us your meal plan for the next week.
That's easy. I go to one place in town. I'm making good friends at the Cracker Barrel.
The barrel.
The barrel. Changed the name a couple of weeks ago.
Just the barrel, you know, but you go, I think you're going the wrong way.
Yeah, I'm going down.
There we go.
The bow, very good, very nice place.
There's the, there we go. So so this is the revised, can you just point to what's different? Since we're being asked to amend an agreement, so what I'm looking for is what was there before and what's the change?
So right now, right now, see, theirs is a little different than mine because I put names in it. But if you go to the Assistant Project Manager, you have the O&amp;M tech, which is six, and the maintenance tech, which is one.
Yep.
The O&amp;M tech will go to, we'll call it six and a half and maintenance will go to one and a half. So that will be, you know what I'm saying?
No, because this is the revised one. This, this document currently shows the up, so it's not going to six and a half. It went to six from what?
Oh, I'm sorry, five.
Okay, so the O&amp;M tech was five and now that's six?
Correct.
And maintenance tech, any other changes?
No, maintenance tech is staying one, but that, like I said, I'm probably confusing you. The O&amp;M tech will be a, they'll have two parts in the.
I got it. Yeah, okay, but, but the, but the original Exhibit F that was part of that contract.
Was five.
And that's the only change here?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Joe.
Liz?
And Russ, just to confirm, that will be a full-time employee of Suez, right?
Correct.
Okay, and is that person already on staff, working on a different project? Or they need to recruit that person?
No, we have to recruit that person.
Okay, so is that you? Who actually does that process?
No, they're very good at filling me in on how they're working within, what they're doing. Certain things I do get involved in, but eventually that's absolutely their decision. But they are really good about discussing candidates and things with us before they hire people.
Okay, so your expectation is that hiring process will happen now and starting, that person will start July 1st, is that right?
They've already made it clear that they start before July 1st. That's on them, not on us.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
And Russ, this will be a permanent hire, right? Not a contracted?
Definitely permanent, yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thanks. Russ, if you can terminate your screen share, please.
I was just going to show you my dinner.
I was afraid of that. So I will see if there are members of the public who have comments or questions on the Fifth Amendment with the Suez Water Environmental Services Agreement. Seeing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I make a motion that the Board acting as the Suez Board of Water Commissioners pursuant to Article 11 of the 2019 Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting and Chapter 139 of the Acts of 1879, as amended and all other applicable laws, do hereby vote to authorize its chair to execute and deliver the Fifth Amendment to the agreement between the Town of Hingham and Suez Environmental Services Incorporated and substantially the form attached here too.
Before that seconded, Tom, is that language correct? As the Suez Board of Water Commissioners?
Good question, Joe.
Yeah, I wondered, that's what the, that's.
Right, I could tell your hesitancy.
Yeah, I would make it the Ware River Water System.
Right.
Okay, I'd amend, I'd amend the vote list on the.
Sorry about that.
Yep, okay, got it. Is there a second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe?
Aye.
Approved. Thank you. And Russ, you're not off the hook yet. It is time for your water superintendent report. And I will ask, as part of that report, if you can just comment on the transition going from Suez to Viola.
I'll go back because that's a little, a little more. So the transition is starting now. It only affected right now email addresses and things like that. I did have a conversation with Suez about two weeks ago concerning notifying residents when they start seeing things that say that. It is on the IVR when you call into customer service, just notifying that there will be, there is a change in name. But as of right now, the websites and things like that will not change. When they click on to pay their bill, it's still going to say Suez. I have requested that somehow, if we can, when residents click on there, they also have Ware River involved. I guess in time, it was something that was a really difficult thing to do, so we didn't get our wish. So I'm putting our wish back out there again. I think it'd be better for residents to click on to pay a bill and it had something that said Ware River, not just Suez or Viola, whichever it becomes. So the transition is beginning. We were told there would be no changes in our staff, no change in the management that operates and runs our, our system with the contract, the contract. So the only thing you'll see right now is a couple of email changes, but that's it for right now on our end.
Anything else in your report?
Sure. Very quickly, Filter 1 is completed. There were no real major issues with it. The repairs were well within the $70,000, $75,000 budget. We did drain down Filter 2 to start taking out the carbon. It was a little scary at first because we did find stone and carbon in the drain water. But after we, and that would be an indication that maybe the tiles, where there's a breach within the tiles, which happened in Filter Number 3, everybody's aware of what happened there. Fortunately, when we took everything out, we noticed that the tiles were in great shape. So we could, we went down, did a thorough investigation and found that when they installed the filters way back in 1996, they forgot to put in one of the airlines. So what happened with that airline is all the carbon and stone slowly went into it and plugged it. And that is why Filter Number 2 has always had issue with its air scouring. So technically, it was only backwashing has to filter all these years, for so many years. That's really good news because their fix is a lot less than new tiles. So we're going to start working on those piles tomorrow. They're going to re-crop them like they did every other filter. Do some replacement of some of the lines, unplug that, that airline and add a new airline in where they didn't put the airline. So that was good news today, so that should be well within the $75,000 repair budget for that filter. So the repairs of the centrifuge are ongoing. Currently, I'm scared it'll be completed in May. And then one of the tasks that we put on Suez was to give us some larger capital items for the water treatment plant FY '23, which they did give those to me. I added them to the capital list. And then I'm asking them to go to 24 and 25 because it's getting a little tough sometimes when things just pop up and we don't want things popping up. So we want to be proactive with some of these things. We did win an award from Mass DEP for fluoridation addition. So all of our fluoride levels have been perfect for 12 months straight. So we actually won an award, which we'll put on the website as soon as I get a chance. I did in my report, sure, the capital projects, so the water treatment plant, there are some valves and some other things that need to be replaced. One of the biggest items that I want to see replaced on the level indicator, Alex, on the filters, is if the filters are backwashing and there's some type of failure with the overflow plates, then it actually overflow into the plant. It's happened a few times, I guess, over the history of the plant. But no one thought to get the level indicators fixed, which actually shut off the system, if not the whole treatment system, just that filter backwash, if the water gets to a certain level. So we're going to get those fixed next year. And all CIP work is ongoing. Downing Street went very well. They did it within three weeks. The residents were very pleased with the work and I want to thank Liz, now there's. I can't remember her name all of a sudden, Liz. Liz, the cab. Why can't I remember her name?
Chrissy, Chrissy Grabber.
Chrissy did a great job. She actually put everyone's emails together for Downing Street and gave them to me. So I would send an email to the people on Downing Street, give them updates. It was much easier than handing out to, just a quick email to the entire street. So it worked out very well. Wompa Tuck, the contract has been shut down until April 18th. That contract was put out with the contingency that they couldn't start until after the winter. We weren't going to do winter work out there, so they'll be back on April 18th to start that. And the warrants are being finalized. To date, we've collected $10,026 in revenue, so we're averaging about $271,000 per week. With 15 weeks remaining and $4.1 million expected to come in, we will be right at budget of 14.2. Working very diligently with collections, we have the system up and running. The automated system will call, they call, it calls anyone that has passed over $1,000. That's been working very well with collecting overdue balances. We are going to start shut-offs in the spring because the state is allowing us to start that again and we need to because there are a lot of people that are still out there with 60, over 120 days. And I am working with people that have some type of issue or some type of, you know, request to, you know, help them make payments. So I'm working closely with people that call and ask for that and we put something together for them. Um, you know, help them make payments, so I'm, I'm working closely with people that call and ask for that and we, we put something together for them. And nothing on conservation and drawing, everything's good, everything's cool and ready to go. That's about it.
Russ, thank you. Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Russ. Um, are we still on track for the master plan to be completed at the end of April?
Yes, I have a call into E P and I'm gonna set up a meeting next week to do a little, you know, finalization on that, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Bill?
Russ, that's good news about filter two coming in under seventy-five thousand for the repairs. That's excellent. Yeah, it's very good news.
It was scary yesterday when they told me they found this. It was very scary.
Yeah, I remember you saying you're concerned about that. That's great. Great to hear that. So, great job, Russ. Thank you for everything.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Um, Russ, uh, absolutely great job. Uh, thank you o- on behalf of the commissioners. Um, just one question, what is our? Um, either collection rate or uncollection rate, if you will, and, and what, what metric are we using to measure how? Effective we are? Is there a benchmark that we compare ourselves, ourselves against?
Well, hey, the, the report I got this week, I think had a very large mistake in it, so we had double checking that, Joe, so I will email everybody tomorrow or the next day. But I don't wanna say anything right now.
Got it.
Um, but the benchmark is definitely a weekly report from Suez that shows all of our, all our receivables and what we have passed due. Um, but I did find one thing that jumped off the page on me and I wanna, I wanna clarify that before I say anything about it.
Perfect, okay. Are there members of the public comments or questions about the water and super, water superintendent's report? I am seeing none. Uh. Now I will ask if there are members of the public who have comments or questions on items not on the agenda for the Board of Water Commissioners. Seeing none, that completes our agenda for the Weir River Water System. I am prepared to accept a motion to adjourn.
Tom moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Joe, I, the Weir River System Board of Water Commissioner meeting is adjourned and. We will take thirty seconds and then begin the Hingham Select Board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ.
Okay, it is, uh, six thirty-three. I will call to order this meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board. On March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter twenty of the Acts of twenty twenty-one. Temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting. In accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-F. So that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone else recording the meeting this evening? Seeing none. We will move to the first item on our, our agenda, which is to consider approval of the minutes of March eighth and March ten, twenty twenty-two. I'm prepared to proceed, Liz?
I'm ready.
And Bill?
I'm ready.
Then I am ready to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute stated March eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
Hi.
Bill?
Hi.
Joe, I. Another motion.
I'm making motion to approve the minute dated March tenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, I, minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement. For statewide opioid settlements, and we are honored to have Attorney Kerry Ryan with us. The town's litigation counsel to walk us through what is before us.
Thank you. I, I'm pleased that you're honored. Thank you very much. This is something that the Attorney General has requested that all the municipalities execute. This is basically, uh, a few months ago. Uh, the town, as well as many of the towns, entered into an agreement with the Attorney General concerning. A settlement of the opioid litigation that the Attorney General had pending with McKeeson Corporation, Cardinal Health. And AmerisourceBergen Corporation and Johnson and Johnson. Uh, that settlement has proceeded and apparently enough of the folks, uh, signed on to the settlement. That they now are talking about actually receiving money from the settlement, which is a good thing for both the state and the town. Uh, what the Attorney General has proposed in this newest agreement. Is to actually increase the allocation to the municipalities. From fifteen percent, which was the original, uh, agreement, to forty percent. Of the monies that are coming in from the settlements with the opioid groups. That, uh, is helpful to the town, obviously, going from fifteen percent to forty percent, uh, is very good. In general, the allocation means for the Town of Hingham approximately fifty thousand dollars per year. For approximately eighteen years. And so that's, uh, money. The agreement then has its second component. That it, the money be used for specific opioid-related items such as disorder treatment. Uh, treatment and recovery strategies. Uh, support of people who are at risk of developing opioid problems, uh, harm reduction. Um. Uh, and preventing misuse of opioids, uh, those type of things. So what the Attorney General has attempted to do is give. Very specific criteria to the town. The idea is not for the money to just simply go into the general fund. The idea is that the money would come into the town and specifically be used for the purposes that the settlement was designed for. And so those are the two items that are in the subdivision agreement that you all have in front of you. And the Attorney General has asked all of the municipalities to execute that and get that back to her as soon as possible.
Kerry, so as I look at the document, it looks like the town is allocated in the aggregate, uh, a little over one million dollars.
You are correct.
And that.
And that's, that's the estimate for the eighteen years.
Right, and, and the payments are actually skewed so that larger payments come upfront. And in the first year, our payment would exceed a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
Correct. You'll notice that the first year is a hundred and fourteen thousand, the second year drops down to sixty thousand. In the final years, uh, looks like about six, seven years, it's only forty-five thousand. And so it does vary, and keep in mind, these are estimates, it's, you know, premised on a whole lot of assumptions, but these. Are estimates the Attorney General has put out and I think feels pretty comfortable with.
You're right, so it, it dropped, goes from one fourteen to, it looks like sixteen, then it goes back up to eighty-two and then eighty-six. Uh, before going back down to fifty-three.
Um, correct.
So, uh. What, uh. Other members, uh, for example, AdCom may wanna know is whether or not we can put this into our forecasting formulas. How, how, how sure can we be of these numbers?
Um, I, that's a good question. I think the settlements have been signed. But you then end up with, you know, collection issues with the, uh, folks that it's coming from, so. I don't, I think that's a technical question I'd like to get back to you on.
Sure.
My guess is the Attorney General would probably tell you not to put them into future, but to allocate them for programs. That, as I said, they have to go into those specific categories. And, uh, come up with something for that. I think the policy issues of exactly where you would put the money. You would probably wanna spend a little time talking about that amongst yourselves. Um, I think at this point, what the Attorney General is looking for is in particular approval of the gain from fifteen percent to forty percent. And confirmation that the town will properly use the funds in the categories concerning opioid use.
So Joe, we've done a little bit of that analysis internally. You want me to answer that?
Please.
So, um, what we're discussing internally anyway is we have, uh, the town's social worker. Um, we have the town's mental health clinician through the police department, uh, the town health department. All three of those sectors, as well as, um, potentially, um. Uh, the senior center, uh, outreach coordinator and the veterans service officer. Uh, all of these folks have, um, and even with the schools, will have intersection, uh, intersections with the opioid crisis. And I think either through educational programs or treatment programs or referral programs, those are the types of things that I think the. A G is hoping that we would spend this money on, and that is where we're hoping to be able to focus it.
Great, thank you. Kerry, there are several opioid lawsuits, uh, and settlements going around. Is, is this? The only one that you see the town being able to participate in, or are there other options that you foresee in the future for us?
I believe the Attorney General is still actively pursuing. Uh, she hasn't announced any new case. But she has set this up so that it includes the settlements through January twenty twenty-six. So the idea is, I believe they are hoping to hit a few more, uh, companies. Um, the town has not expended any money on, uh, pursuing the opioid litigation. The town has not. Uh, incurred expense on, on doing this itself, and so the town has, has saved that expense.
Got it. Okay, Liz, any questions?
Thank you, Kerry. Um, I guess my only question to you is, do you see any risk in us participating in this?
I do not. In fact, I, I think, I, I have looked at this, I have talked to the Attorney General's office. I think it would be, uh, advisable for the town to sign on.
Okay, and obviously the creation of the programs or how we're gonna allocate the money is a next step. They're not expecting that to be. Kind of all thought out at this point or designed.
Correct, and Tom and I have talked about the programs that were listed in the types of categories, and they look broad enough to include the types of things. That Tom was already beginning to look to.
Right, okay, excellent, thank you.
Bill? Uh, yes, Kerry, thank you for your good work here. Um, just to add my two cents to this discussion. Um, you know, I think we have a lot of good, uh, educational programs in town already. Um, I'd like to see a lot of these funds go toward treatment programs if we can. I think individuals who, who suffer from addiction. Issues need all the assistance that we can give them. Certainly, we can, um, use some of these funds for, to improve, you know, to add to our. Educational programs, but anything we can do to help on the treatment side in town. Uh, which I think we don't have a lot of resources already dedicated towards, um, I think would be a, a, a good focus for these funds. Um, and so we can maybe have a further discussion on that. Um, but I think this is great, um, appreciate your work here, Kerry, and. Um, I know families who, um. You know, have loved ones who are suffering from addiction issues, and anything we can do with the town to assist them is step in the right direction, so. Looking forward to further discussion how we can assist here, so thank you.
Thanks, though. Um, Kerry? Uh, looking through the agreement, I do not see that the town is, by signing this, is. Entering into any release or waiver of claims. Am I correct with that?
Correct, we have in the other agreements that you all signed, I believe it was in December.
Yep.
There were releases in that agreement. There were actually two of them, one was with J and J and one was with three, the three distributors. Um, so, uh, to the extent that they, the A G wants us to enter into releases, those would be separate.
Right, so there's nothing addition, there's no additional releases here.
Correct.
Right, great. Okay, are there members of the public who have comments or questions? I am seeing none, so I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to approve the Massachusetts State Subdivision Agreement for statewide opioid settlements. In the form attached hereto and authorize the town administrator to sign said agreement on behalf of the Town of Hingham.
Uh, roll call vote, Liz?
I.
Bill?
Hi.
And Joe, I approved. Kerry, thank you for your work, uh, much appreciated.
Thank you all. Take care.
Okay, uh, now we move to the most controversial issue and topic on our agenda for the evening, which is to consider nominating. Leslie Badger as the Inspector of Animals for the Town of Hingham. Uh, I believe we have Chief Jones here. Um, and I'm looking to see is.
I'm here.
There you are. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm unfortunately dialed in. I apologize, I'm dialed in, not on, um, video, unfortunately.
Chief Jones, please explain what is being proposed to us.
Good evening, Joe. So this is just a, a reappointment. It, uh, comes up every year. And it's required for, uh, the Animal Control Officer to be appointed as the inspector for, uh, things such as quarantines, et cetera. So it's just a routine, uh, annual appointment that, uh, that she goes through.
So, um. My, my sleuthing online tells me that as the animal inspector. Um, at, uh, the primary duty of the animal inspector has recently become rabies control. In the domestic and animal population, and also the animal inspector is responsible for barn inspections. And called, may be called in to assist with domestic animal disease quarantines in the event of an outbreak. Is that it?
That is correct.
Okay, so Leslie, that's a fair description of what your responsibilities are. Um, and if you could just tell us how you have handled those responsibilities during the prior year.
So I have, um, been the animal inspector as well as the A C O for the last fourteen years. Um, in this last year, I have, um, conducted the kennel inspections, barn inspections. Um, those are, they, um, those get done between the, the month of October to January first. And then also if we have, um, quarantines that need to be done, whether it's, uh, for a dog bite or a disease issue. Right now, um, the last four months, we've been dealing with the avian flu. Um, it has been, uh, tested positive in the state, but thankfully so far not in our immediate area. But I've been getting the word out to, um, everyone in the community that has chickens to let them know to be careful and keep a watchful eye. And also if, um, anyone ends up with a bird that looks sick. Um, it may be displaying the symptoms and that they can reach out to me and I can help them figure out what to do with it because the Wildlife Center. Because of the bird flu is, is not accepting any birds at this time, so, um, that would be my, my job until. The bird flu usually disappears by summertime, the heat, uh, usually kills it off, which is good. And we're hopeful that will happen, so, um, I would be the one that would, um, check in on those birds. Um, I got a call today for one, um, but it was not, it, it didn't have any of those signs or symptoms, so that was good. Um, so it could just be properly disposed of, um, but that's kind of a quick overview of. What I've been handling in this last year.
Thank you, and I, I do wanna say that, um, I, I can't speak for what communications the other members of the select board were receiving. But from what I've been receiving, um, you get consistently high marks, rave reviews for everything you do for the town. Uh, the public recognizes how important you are and we recognize that as well, so, so thank you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Liz, any, uh, comments or questions?
Yes, Leslie, you do a great job, so thank you. I, I know at one of our previous meetings, you mentioned that you work with some of our surrounding communities. So just curious, would you be the Inspector of Animals for Cohasset as an example or only for Hingham?
I am only the Hingham Animal Inspector, but if, say, they went on vacation or we had, where we had the situation where they didn't have an A C O. I was the temporary, um, to help out if they had a situation, I would be the one at that time that would be helping out and acting as their. Um, animal inspector, but at this time, they do have an animal control officer slash inspector. Who goes through the same yearly appointment that I do. Every inspector has to. It's required by the state.
Right, right, okay, excellent, thank you.
No problem. No problem, thank you.
Hey, Bill.
I know questions, Leslie, just keep doing the great work you've been doing, appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I appreciate everyone. And as always, I'm so thankful to work for a great community because I know there's still ACOs out there that don't get all that I get. So I truly am thankful and I appreciate all the nice comments and I will keep giving it a hundred and ten percent.
Thank you. Are there members of the public who have comments or questions concerning the inspector of animals position? Seeing none, I'm prepared. Oh, I'm sorry, we have John, I saw somebody with a windsurfing outfit on. I didn't realize that was Mr. Asher. So, John, if you could just give us your name and address, please.
Jonathan Asher, Five Common Street. I just want to enthusiastically endorse Leslie's reappointment. As an animal control officer, I think her work speaks for itself. I just want to add that in her personal time, I worked with Leslie on a couple of veterans-related projects. And I cannot say enough about the work that she's done in addition to her assigned tasks as animal control officer. So I enthusiastically endorse her reappointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other members of the public? Okay, John, you can put your hand down now. Thank you, okay, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'm making a motion to nominate Leslie Badger as the Inspector of Animals for the town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Leslie, thank you again for all your work.
Thank you all, I appreciate it. And thank you, Chief, for being here too tonight for this. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night. The next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with the Oakers Company to supply the town with Phase One IT Network Switch Replacements. I see Bill Hardigan as well as Kathy Riley here. Bill, did I pronounce their name right? The Oakers Company?
I hear it, Oakers, Oakers. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Just did not want to offend anyone. So if you could just, please explain what is being proposed.
Certainly, the network switches throughout our environment, Town Hall, Police, Fire, DPW and so on, is about thirty switches are all coming end of life this year, twenty twenty-two. So what we're looking to do is do this project in phases, taking advantage of the significant, call it forced refresh that happened within our equipment due to COVID and the CARES Act reimbursement of a new equipment. So we're kind of light this year on having to buy desktops and laptops. So taking advantage of some of that windfall within our operating budget to do Phase One this year through the operating budget and replace Town Hall Complex, it's about twelve switches, as well as some of the in-building fiber cable that goes between the main server room here on the third floor. And then there's a couple little sub closets throughout the building. That cable is a little older and not able to carry the higher speed that we'll be looking to do now in the very near future. So this Phase One will address Town Hall Complex. And we also had a capital request asked for Phase Two, which would be next fiscal year, and that's for town meeting.
And in terms of the time period covered by this contract, what would be your estimated start and end dates?
Well, right now, they're looking at two to four month lead time to get equipment. But pretty sure we'll probably be on the shorter side of that. So hopefully in about two months, we would start that.
Because I know the agreement has a provision providing that needs to be completed no later than nine months.
Right.
Native agreement. Is that?
That should be sufficient, yeah.
Yeah. And in terms of the dollar amount to be expended under this agreement, it is a little less than seventy-five thousand dollars. Are you comfortable that that's sufficient amount to accomplish what's needed?
Yes, yes, we've, I've worked very close with them. We've looked over what we have, what we need and come up with some good numbers. And, you know, I got multiple quotes and multiple different vendors and this is a good, good deal for us.
Great. Liz, questions or comments?
Hey, Bill, thank you for all of this information. Just curious, what is the, how old are the current network switches in Town Hall?
Twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, thereabouts.
Okay. All right, and do you have any concerns, just I guess in general, related to both of the, this item and the next one we'll be discussing in terms of cybersecurity or anything, you know, additional that we should be looking at or considering with these new projects?
Certainly, one of the good things about these switches is they'll be current and supported by the vendor. So we'll get security patches, whereas the current switches we have are end of life, so there's no more support. So if there's something vulnerable, we're kind of on our own. So this, you know, has that enhanced feature of security as well within our switches. And, you know, there's always things, there's a few things I'm looking at for next fiscal year as far as, that is, had a discussion with the vendor today about potential, they call SOC, or Security Operations Center, where they do active monitoring and looking at different services like that. So we could have somebody have twenty-four seven eyes on things. And part of that is they look into our firewalls and switches and monitor that for errant traffic. So still looking at those things and we'll see what else we have to come up with.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Thank you for, I know you're on top of it and appreciate it.
Thanks.
Before I turn it over to Bill, Kathy, I neglected to ask you if there was anything you wanted to add with respect to an explanation of the contract. You're muted. Kathy, unmute yourself, please.
I didn't know I could. Okay, like Bill said before, he got multiple quotes, but this is a really good deal and it's from the state contract. So it wasn't, you know, it's a much simpler process when we go that way.
Great, thank you. Bill Ramsey.
Great, no questions, Joe, thank you.
Are there any members of the public who have comments or questions on the proposed agreement with the Oakers Company? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with the Oakers Company to supply the town with Phase One IT Network Switch Replacements in an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand sixteen dollars and four cents.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. We are approved. Bill Hardigan, thank you for the presentation, but you're not off the hook. We're going to the next item, which is to consider approval of the agreement with the, with N E L Corporation for the complete upgrade renovation of the Town Hall IT Server Room. So again, Bill, I'll start with you and then I'll turn it over to Kathy before we ask our questions.
Certainly, we've got, what we've got here is, is hold over, this was article, came up in Article twenty-five in the twenty twenty town meeting to raise appropriate money to renovate the room that actually sits right behind my head here. It's roughly a ten by twenty-three foot closet. It's really two closets that were pressed into service to be what is somewhat passing for a server room. But we need, we need a little bit more elbow room in there, it's real tight. We've got electrical and heating or more appropriately cooling issues within the room. So this project, what it'll do is kind of gut the room, seal up two excess doorways and upgrade electrical, give us battery backup for all the equipment in there, which we don't necessarily have today. We've got a lot of small little UPS units trying to do that job. And we'll upgrade the electrical, upgrade the AC in there so that we will be off building AC and have our own isolated air conditioning in there. And really enhance the layout of the room, proper cable management trays. So all the cable will be nice and neat and organized and not tripping over cables on the floor to reach something where we risk unplugging something inappropriately.
Wouldn't want that to happen.
No.
Kathy, anything you wanted to add?
We, we had four bids and this was the lowest bid at two hundred and nine thousand dollars. So that put us in a good position from the budget that we had. We also, prior to this, had hired an engineering firm to help us develop the specifications and, and the whole, you know, which was pretty complex, given air conditioning and all of the other connections that I had to make. But in any case, the engineer and Bill reviewed it, happy with the bid and happy with the company. So it's been a long time. I heard about this when I first started in November twenty twenty, so.
How, how comfortable are you with N E L Corporation? I mean, have we, have, does the town have any experience? Or if not, have we spoken to other company, other towns or other entities that have dealt with N E L Corporation?
Our, our engineering firm, M M and T, McKenna Mechanical and Taylor, they did check references and are familiar with their work from other projects. I did look them up when I heard of them and I guess they did a sidewalk project here in Hingham. I don't know what, I know it's kind of a different, they kind of do a lot of stuff, so really doesn't exactly apply, but they've done work for the town before.
And they had to be certified by D C A M, which they were checked, all those things were checked too.
Okay, great. Liz, any questions?
Just a quick question, just looking at the amount that was appropriated in town meeting, the two ninety-six. So did that cover the design work plus this two oh nine?
Yeah, the engineering was about thirty plus this two oh nine. And then there's some contingencies if the pricing isn't exactly what for some of the components that the engineer thought it might be.
Okay, great. Have you seen that the components have gone up with most everything?
You know, they, they did that recently. The engineering work was completed right prior to the RFP. So it should be good, but, you know, some of these things change daily. So we really won't know until we get this signed, get them start processing and lead times and we'll see what the pricing holds.
Okay, thank you.
Ramsey.
You know, Bill, having been in that, first of all, calling in a room is very, is pretty nice. You know, having been in that closet, it's amazing to me that it's lasted us as long as it has. It's, it's quite, it's quite an operation there. But how long will it take to do the upgrade once we're in that phase?
You know, that's, that's gonna be, that's gonna be the challenge because we have to maintain the room live. So it's gonna be a very scheduled phased upgrade throughout that. So not exactly sure, I'm hoping sooner rather than later, especially when we start gutting and ripping out the existing air conditioning. And before we put the new stuff in, hopefully while the weather's still cool and if we need some cool air, we can bring it in from opening a window. But, you know, I don't want to be doing that in the middle of July when taking down the air conditioning. I'm gonna be a few sleepless nights over this project.
Yeah, yeah, and does our public safety communications run through that room?
All communications runs through this.
Okay, all right, great. Well, I know, I know you handle it with care, so thanks, Bill, appreciate it.
And the, the contract itself says a hundred and twenty days from inception of the work, from start of the work. That's an estimate from the engineer, but again, we don't know the lead time. So we'll have to see within that.
Yep, but, but you're confident that four months is, seems to be an adequate time to get this done?
Should be, I don't see why it shouldn't be, barring something really unforeseen with delays in getting equipment.
Great. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept the motion.
I'm making a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with N E L Corporation for the IT Server Room Upgrade at Town Hall in an amount not to exceed two hundred and nine thousand dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Approved.
Great, thank you very much.
Yep, Bill and Kathy, thank you. I know Kathy, you're gonna continue with us. But Bill Hardigan, we, we know you're behind the scenes on so many projects that the town is involved with and your efforts are really appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, just take a quick moment. I don't know if you've seen, but our fiber project, long delayed, is underway. The trucks are out in the street. If you've seen them on Main Street or they're all over the place and that, they move along like gangbusters.
Yes. So, okay, thank you. We'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is to consider approval of the agreement with Beals and Thomas for a twenty twenty-two master plan for Hingham Harbor. And I am going to start with J R Frye to lead this. Before I go on, Marco, I see, are there, I just want to make sure, do you have a a majority of your group that we would need to call your meeting to order?
We do not. We only have myself and Peter Brannigan here and Alan Peralta from Bathing Beach Trustees.
Okay, great, just want to make sure we're respecting the open meeting law. So with that, I will turn it over to J R. And you're sideways, there we go, J R.
Hi there, so, right, this was, this is a contract.
J R, I'm gonna stop, J R, we're gonna stop this.
Planning work.
Tom.
That.
Tom, can you figure out a way we can enhance the communications here?
I will, yeah.
Okay. Just, let us wait a second here. While, while we're reading, Marco, you were intimately involved in this. And so maybe on behalf of Harbor Development, if you could begin the discussion while we're waiting for J R.
Sure, Marco Por, Thirty-three Home Street. The Hingham Harbor Development Committee has been working to come up with a way to update the two thousand seven master plan that was done for Hingham Harbor. And the master plan for the town in twenty twenty identified the harbor as one of our most treasured assets. And so the goal of this plan is to, number one, make sure that it complements all the other projects that have been done in town, including the Town Master Plan, the M A P C Sustainability Study, the Rapid Recovery Grant Study, and the several other projects like that. And flush out the details of how to make the harbor a more enjoyable and usable place for all of our town's residents. And so projects that we would envision would be part of that sort of vision study are things like a playground, a unified Veterans Memorial, more shading structures, and things that just make access more equal for everybody. So that's the genesis of it. We've applied for this CPC grant for three consecutive years. We were finally awarded the grant. We went through a lengthy procurement process and the result is what's now in front of you.
Great. I will, I see Alan Peralta is here. Is there anything that you want to add on behalf of the Bathing Beach Trustees?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Marco summarized that we've been at this for a while and the goal actually is to come up with kind of goals and objectives going forward. We've accomplished a lot since the two thousand seven master plan, but where do we go from there? And as the guy who's been on this for a while, as has Bill Riordan, the idea is this is a roadmap for the future generation of Harbor Development Committee and Bathing Beach Trustees for projects going forward. But thank you for the time.
Marco and Alan, I just, first, thank you both for, for staying with us and making sure that the town pursues this project. You're both right, this, you know, the harbor is a gem of, of the town and we need to maximize its value. What, what do you see as the deliverable as a result of the town spending this money? What, what will we get and how do we know that what we got is good? I'm not sure which one of you want to respond.
Maybe I'll start. So there's really three pieces to it. The first piece is, we want to have a vision of how to expand the use of the harbor. And so there's a list. of how to expand the use of the harbor. And so there's a list of about thirty five stakeholders that we've put together who we will be asking for what they would like to see at the harbor front. That list will also have associated with it the amounts of potential costs with any of those ideas, as well as potential permitting, you know, no shows, or or you know, things that make it just not possible. So we're going to come up with a concrete list that we will help to prioritize to say, you know, we're going to have unified seating. Today, we have five different styles of benches in the harbor, and there's no policy as to who can put a bench where it's all relatively, you know, random. So we want to make sure that we get uniformity, and we get a consistent look and feel. It's going to tie in, by the way, also to the wayfinding signage effort that the town has ongoing to make it more usable. So so that's number one, is is really the landscaping, hardscaping part of it. We're going to extend the walkway that has been started all the way, hopefully up past Barnes Wharf, and and make it a really, you know, almost a mile long path for people to walk along. So that's part one is is, you know, structures, landscaping, hardscaping. Part two is a really significant part that hasn't been addressed, and that is trying to figure out how to control programming at the harbor. There's no unified website today where somebody can look to see what it would take to, let's say, reserve the new community house, or what events might be going on at the harbor. People have asked us to do things like drive in movie night at the harbor. So we're going to be looking at other peer towns to see how they manage activities. Because as you've noticed during COVID, of course, the utilization of the waterfront has increased dramatically. And then the last part is, we want to make sure that whatever structures do get envisioned and perhaps ultimately get built will be able to be maintained. We don't have sufficient garbage pickup as it stands now. So unless the D P W is awarded bigger budgets, we've got to find a way to maintain all that and make it pleasurable for everybody. So those are the three pieces. There is a concrete set of deliverables specified in the proposal. This proposal, by the way, has been worked on for for a very, very long time. As you probably know, we put it out to bid publicly, went through the, you know, official process. We sent notices out to about ten bidders. The top three of our choices, unfortunately, the top two backed out because of age, they're retiring. And in the end, we only received one bid. That's always a concern, of course, because you want multiple bidder bidders. However, it's not a big budget. It's sixty thousand. And when we evaluated the proposal using the technical part of the proposal, they were rated in every single category is highly advantageous. And what really swayed us in the end was the reference checks. So we checked with the town of Cohasset, Plymouth, and Worcester about their experiences, having done master plans specifically to, you know, public lands along the water. And the the feedback was was unanimously positive. It was very, very strong. So we cited as a committee between the Bathing Beach Trustees and Harbor Development Committee at the end of all to recommend to you, the select board and the town administrator that we award this contract.
Alan, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I think that was it, Mr. Chairman. I I think the big thing for me is going to be very specific objectives for programs where we can get grants out of this, you know, what grants are available. They've been extremely successful in the city of Worcester, for example, and open space grants. And hopefully, we can break these into projects that, you know, neither the Bathing Beach Trustees, we have the smallest budget in the town, I think, of like forty thousand, and the Harbor Development doesn't have any. So we kind of rely on C P C and other avenues. So it would be nice if we got out of this, and one of my objectives is to actually have a number of different projects that fit different cost categories. Because C P C always has a challenge in a given year. If they're funding a major project or something else, there were certain gaps where there may be room for fifteen thousand. We did the signage down the harbor for fifteen thousand dollars. So sometimes even ten or fifteen thousand can go a long way.
Absolutely. I I will say, I'm I'm not aware that Worcester has a harbor. So I was
They have a lake. They have a wonderful lake. In fact, a high school rowing team competes on it regularly.
Is that Yeah, that's the is that the Indian Lake?
Yes. Sigamund.
Yeah. So I believe we have J R back on the line. J R, if you could just give us your description, please.
Yeah, Marco covered just about everything that I was going to talk about. It it was Beals and Thomas was very responsive to the R S P. They it covered everything that was both necessary and and I think demonstrated that they have a a high level of capability to complete the project favorably. And there were a number of other, you know, we we had discussed internally some performance metrics, because we want to be able to come out of this and check the boxes, as it were, and know that that as we move forward, we're we're getting the project that we expect out of this. So among other things, we've got, I believe Marco already mentioned it, thirty five different stakeholders that we anticipate having very active discussions with to really get a robust sense of of what the vision for our for your harbor should be. So I think it's a good project, a good contract. And I look forward to seeing the results.
And the the contract for us, I believe, has the work continuing through August thirty one of twenty twenty two. Are you are you satisfied that's a reasonable time for this work to be completed?
I believe that they were initially looking for a draft by August. Now, as we get into it, we may want to revisit that timetable. And the point being, there is not an intention to rush through this to meet a hard deadline. As we get into it, once Harbor Development, the trustees, as as they're driving the contract, but once they get into it, if they determine that the in order to get the community involvement that we'd like to see and to really engage the stakeholders that we want to involve, it may take a little more time than that. And if that were the case, then we would look for a contract extension. But that would be something that would come at the request of the Harbor Development Committee and the trustees.
Right, because the the contract before us has services continuing through August thirty one. So if there's an expectation that that date is not the best date, either we can address it now, or it sounds like you might consider addressing it with a contract amendment in the future. Joe, any comment? Please.
So the reason for that date initially was that we had started this procurement process a long time ago, and unfortunately, it got stuck. And we didn't really get it to this stage where we are now until months later. And so the date, in theory, should be extended. I did actually call Beals and Thomas and ask them what their resources were to be able to handle meeting that deadline, which we imposed back originally in order to be able to meet some of the C P C grant dates.
Yep.
Um, and what they told me is that they have sufficient resources budgeted for this, and that they could pull in additional if needed. They said their biggest concern is frankly, the scheduling of meetings with the stakeholders. And so we're going to have to put public dates out there and make sure that people who want to participate can participate at at these times. But as J R said, it it's really a self imposed deadline of sorts. And in the end, we want to make sure this is the plan that's going to serve us well for the next ten years. So we don't want to rush it. But yet, you know, if we can at least get a few things on the table by August to say we want to apply to C P C for that, that would be great.
Who on the town side will be managing this contract?
I assume it's Emily Wentworth, who who is the Community Planning Director, will be the lead, and she's she's got the most oversight over all the other plans.
Emily and Art will be working on it as well.
Great. And just one one final question before I turn it over to my fellow select board members. I'm satisfied that this is different from the master plan work that has previously been undertaken by the town, and that it it builds on it, but it's not duplicative of that. I just want to make sure that that you're satisfied that we are doing something different, something better and something that better is not the right word, something that will make the town better as a result of doing this work and building on the prior work done by the master plan group.
Are you asking me, Joe?
I I will ask Tom, you, J R, Harbor Development, whoever you think is best qualified to answer that.
I I am qualified. I I I am confident that that is, in fact, the case.
Okay, great. Then I will turn this over to Liz.
Great. Thank you, Marco and Alan. Clearly, a lot of work and and thought has gone into this already. So thank you. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned the thirty five stakeholders. Will there also be an opportunity for public visioning sessions or public feedback?
We have written into the proposal and contract for public meetings.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay, great. And the grants that Alan mentioned, is that part of the deliverable? Are we expecting Beals and Thomas to do that research or make recommendations about grants that we might be eligible for?
Yes, that is a key part, because as Alan said, we have no budget or almost no budget.
Right, right. Okay. And if there is an extension to this contract, is there a cost associated with that?
I'm not aware of whether the
No.
There there shouldn't be, Liz. And it it's for what it's worth. The plane that was done in two thousand seven cost sixty thousand dollars. So I think part of the reason Beals and Thomas has a fair amount of experience along the harbor. So I think there was an advantage they they brought that some outside firms, Mazzarelli and Presley, who have other experience in the harbor, as Marco mentioned, chose not to for personnel reasons. So I think you there were almost, you have to know the harbor already to be competitive. So to actually get something, talking about inflation, you know, in twenty twenty two for two thousand seven prices, I think is pretty good. And they have two highly competent landscape architects who are going to head this up.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey.
Marco and Alan, thanks so much for your leadership down at the harbor. I, you know, I think this is going to be a great step forward. A lot of great things going on at the harbor the last couple of years, and the master plan is just really going to bring everything together. So looking forward to this next phase and looking forward to getting this done in the coming years. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
Are there any members of the public with comments or questions concerning the proposed agreement with Beals and Thomas for a twenty twenty two master plan for Hingham Harbor? I see someone. Oh, Jim Bolito has raised his hand.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Quick question. My name is
Yeah, go ahead.
For three twenty three North Street. Full disclosure, I'm also a member of the Hingham Veterans Council. Just a quick question in regard to the Victory Statue, which is affectionately known as the Horse Statue. Has there any discussion or is it in the 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 new thought process to possibly move that?
So at this so at this point, there's no concrete, you know, intentions, one way or another, but it certainly is part of the discussion I that I've had with Keith German, where his wish would be to have a unified area that brings it all together. But, you know, it's all dependent upon a cost, on the desire of the veterans community. So all of that is part of this master plan process to sort out what the community's wishes really are. It's a beloved statue. I can tell you that.
Yes, it 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 is. I thank you very much. So there's nothing in enough in concrete that says it's going to move yet. And when you mentioned stakeholders, is the V S O one of the folks you consider being one of the stakeholders that will be involved in the discussions?
Yes.
Great. Thanks very much. Appreciate your time and all the work you're doing.
Any other members of the public? Comments or questions? I am seeing none. I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Beals and Thomas Incorporated for a twenty twenty two master plan for Hingham Harbor in an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Liz.
I.
Bill.
I.
And Joe, I. We are approved. Thank you all for your participation.
Thank you.
Before we go to the next item on the agenda, I just want to make sure people are aware of our schedule this evening. We have on the agenda for later in this meeting a a discussion concerning a possible approval of the petition from the M B T A to install the M B A bus system infrastructure improvements at the intersection of Otis Street and Governor Long Road. We will not be taking that up this evening. We will be taking that up, I believe, a week from today. Tom, am I correct? We're talking about the twenty ninth?
I think we were looking at
was it April fifth?
I think we're looking at April fifth.
April fifth, that the so two weeks from tonight. So if there are members of the public who joined us to participate in that discussion, you are welcome to stay with us. But please don't be disappointed when we skip over that item on our agenda. Okay, the next item that we have is to consider the approval, to to consider approving the request of a Fork in the Road LLC doing business as the Square Cafe, one fifty North Street, for an alteration of the licensed premises. And is Carol on the line there? Oh, there you are. And you are the owner, and I think we also are going to be having Emily Wentworth and Jennifer Oram participating in this discussion. But Carol, if you can just start out identifying yourself and explain what is being proposed.
Absolutely. So my husband and I own the Square Cafe, as you mentioned, and I'm actually going to just post on the screen. Just let me know if you can see that.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Here we go.
Here we go. And so this isn't going to take too much time. I just wanted, I've I've used this presentation for the planning board, for the zoning board, and just wanted to share a brief history of what it is that we're requesting. In back in June of twenty twenty, we worked really closely with the Outdoor Table Service, the Restaurant Working Group, and and the Hingham Police, as well as the D P W to take a look at the front of the Square Cafe to see if it would be feasible to hold and host an outdoor patio in a safe way. That was successful. It's been very successful for the downtown community, and customers have just completely embraced it. And, you know, the the other thing is, too, that's really important, is it's not just about the Square Cafe. We have firmly believed since its inception that it's been a benefit to our peer businesses, as well as some of the other happenings in downtown, such as the fall haunted Hingham tours, as well as I have a quick note there that some of our local real estate agents bring their prospective buyers to to lunch to see the patio and kind of show it off as part of the downtown community. So it has really been a success, not just for us. It's helped us through an incredibly stressful time, but it has been something that's really been welcomed by the community. And we even have what you see on screen, several artist renderings of the patio, because it's really captured kind of the the heart of it. So that's a that's one local artist that has drawn our patio. And the second slide I'm just going to bring up just shows the actual plan. It's a it's just a real easy, simple, high level plan of what space we're talking about. We just want, you know, the common notes of street lighting for the patio is supplemented by the lanterns along the building, as well as lighting along our by the lanterns along the building as well as lighting along our awnings. And in the summertime, we have additional lighting on our umbrellas that are outside. The lines on the diagram below actually depict the linked barrier that's required by the ADCC because of the liquor that we would serve on the patio. And then the flower boxes aren't listed here, but we do have flowers and such along the patio to really give it a nice garden feel, particularly during the warmer winter months. And so it's not just all concrete. And then, of course, certainly, as depicted by the the noted dimensions, walkways remain accessible, of course, based upon the guidelines that we've gone over with both planning and zoning. There also it's also clear completely cleared of snow by staff in the winter. And then the Jersey barriers remain in place until a more aesthetic pilot solution can be finalized by the town. And Emily can certainly talk a little bit more about that. And then finally, just to tug at your heartstrings, we have just a few pictures of what the patio looks like when we have sunnier, warmer weather and some other artistic impressions of the patio. Does anybody have any questions?
I'm going to next get a read from the planning and zoning perspective, starting with Emily Wentworth.
Sure. Hi, good evening, Emily Wentworth, Community Planning Director. I I don't know that Jen Orum, the zoning administrator, senior planner, is able to join us tonight. So unless she's raising her hand, I'll just try to speak for both boards. Yep, but the the planning board earlier this month voted to grant a special permit parking waiver for the expanded restaurant use onto the patio. They're proposing an additional thirty seats beyond what they are already permitted to have on the interior of the restaurant. Along with that, they issued a site plan approval for the proposed plan, subject to certain conditions. And then the zoning board just last week likewise voted to grant a special permit to expand the restaurant use itself onto the patio, also subject to certain conditions. The types of conditions imposed by the boards relate, you know, to parking primarily, removal of trash or refuse, noise, if there's amplified sound in connection with the patio and hours of operation, conditions that are very similar to the types of conditions imposed by this board through the the outdoor table service application and permits that that you've issued and are scheduled to expire on April first. The one outstanding item that I guess, you know, this board can take up in connection with the sidewalk license that I I don't believe is before you tonight, but will be in the near future. Is that, you know, as Carol mentioned, the town did submit a grant application for funding to the Massachusetts Department of Transportation through their shared streets and spaces program in order to both design and then install crash rated safety bollards as a more permanent solution to what right now is temporarily in place to protect protect, you know, this outdoor dining area. And, you know, in the event that we're not successful with that grant application, this board may impose a requirement that the applicant would be responsible for both the design and installation of a more permanent solution down there. So that's something to think about in the future.
Great. Just I I think I understood from your comments. It's not just your comments, but my my reading of what's before us is that we are not looking to approve right now a a sidewalk license agreement. That would be a separate document. We're really speaking specifically about the alteration of premises for purposes of what would go, I believe, for the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
That's correct, which which could in turn be subject to the.
Right.
License.
So I think, you know, questions about the specifics of that public sidewalk license, while not directly on point, they're fair game because I think we all want to have a sense of what's what this is going to look like and what the impacts will be. And Emily, I I want to ask you and then maybe, I don't know if Carol has any additional comments, but what are the impacts on the neighbors? Or on the abutting businesses? Is this positive or is it hurting their ability to track customers? What comments have you gotten during during the hearings?
The overwhelming response has been positive during the hearing. We did hear from a resident of the downtown who also happens to be affiliated with the Downtown Association that spoke very positively about the project. We had letters of support from direct abutters or business owners. And then also approximately a hundred letters of support from customers primarily of of the restaurant, but neighbors as well. So it seems to have been very well received.
Great. I mean, the the one thing that no one's talked about during this hearing is the quality of the food, which is great. And and that's, you know, it 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 just adds to, you know, what's what's available to the town. And so, you know.
Thank you.
Many of us, we enjoy the Square Cafe, not just walking by, but going in. So it's we appreciate your your commitment to the town. And we will consider this proposal. Liz Klein, comments or questions?
Thank you, Carol, and thank you, Emily. I I'm very familiar with the the patio and and love it personally. And I know that the the response has been positive, everything that I've seen. Have there been any complaints regarding traffic, parking, noise, anything that we we should be considering?
We have not had any complaints. No.
Okay.
I mean, they're not. People aren't out there late, so there had just haven't been any complaints. No.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, I agree. I think it's it's I I'm glad it's it's been good for for Square Cafe, but it certainly benefited the whole downtown area. So thank you. Thank you.
Go Ramsey.
Yeah, thank you. So Emily, the the permitting that they got, they got the they got an A two and A three, and they got a site plan review from planning board?
Yep, that's correct.
Great. Okay. And, you know, Carol, you know, I commend you on moving on the permits. We are anticipating that the legislature will extend the outdoor table service, but it actually expires next week. I don't know if you knew that or not. So you are good to go. You are good to go either way. So I'm glad that you and Luke moved on this.
Thank you.
So like Liz and Joe said, I I think it's a wonderful addition to downtown. I've I go to a restaurant very often, at least once or twice a month, and the food is great. But I I think that having the seats outside here in other restaurants in in the downtown area just adds to to the ambiance of downtown. I think the last two years, we've seen that. I think it's been a great addition. So happy to support this this project and others. So I think it's a great a great thing to have in the square. And I love seeing it. I love seeing the people out, particularly on a warm, warm night or a warm day. So good to see good things happening in the square.
Thank you.
Can we take down the screen share, please?
Oh, yes. Sorry about that.
There you go. Chief Jones, I think you are still on the line. Have you had any complaints received with respect to the outdoor seating at the Square Cafe?
Good evening again. And no, we've had zero complaints about any noise or anything from the Square Cafe.
Great. Are there any members of the public? Comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to accept a motion.
For these longer ones, I have to put my glasses on here. So okay. Liz can appreciate that. She has a couple of long ones coming up here, too. So I'd make a motion to approve the request of a fork in the road LLC doing business as the Square Cafe, one fifty North Street for an alteration of licensed premises in accordance with the application for alteration of premises. Information filed with the town of Hingham on November fifth, twenty twenty one, provided, however, that use of the sidewalk area of the premises is subject to the granting of a separate public sidewalk license agreement to the applicant by the town of Hingham and subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I we are approved. Looking forward to continued great service at the Square Cafe.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the petition from National Grid to install and maintain approximately five hundred and thirty five feet of four inch gas main in Planters Field Lane. And I will start with the town engineer, J R Fry.
Thank you. Yes, National Grid is putting forth a proposal to relay main in Planters Field Lane. They are also going to be working on what is considered a separate project, but will transition directly into it on the adjacent Wampatuck Road. So the total project encompassing everything in Planters Field Road and Wampatuck Road is anticipated to take about ten weeks. They will be National Grid will be moving forward with notifying residents throughout the neighborhood of the upcoming work. And they will be working to minimize traffic disruptions to the extent that they are able. And obviously, they will have police details on hand to assist with managing traffic. I would imagine that one lane of Planters Field Road may be shut down at times, and the detail officers will direct traffic to proceed in the opposing lane at alternating times. Beyond that, National Grid is doing this work in preparation for the town's anticipated paving of these two roads. At this time, we are most likely looking at paving these two roads next year as there is substantial additional utility work that will be occurring in them. Are there any questions?
So so J R, what I'm understanding from you is that neither of these projects are occurring on roads where there is currently a moratorium in place?
That is correct. Yes, they are actually scheduled for paving. We have scheduled them for this year, but due to the significant amount of utility work, we're Weir River Water will also be doing a water line in Wampatuck. And so with with the amount of utility work that will be going on in these two roads, we are electing to defer reconstruction of the roadways for a year.
Would you mind just going a little further explaining how neighbors will be notified and also the hours of operation?
Yes, absolutely. The neighbors will be notified initially by mail approximately two weeks before the construction will before the contractor mobilizes to the site to begin construction. I believe they also have a regular practice of doing door hangers that they put out two to four days ahead of time. On a longer project like this, it'll it they might take a couple of days. So they'll they'll start that sometime the week prior if they're mobilizing on a Monday, for example. And that they will have a hotline associated with that so that as people experience construction disruption, but especially if there is a any problem with their gas utility while the work is going on, they will have a number to call and notify National Grid of the problem. Oh, and the anticipated hours of construction are seven AM until three thirty PM.
Okay, thank you. Liz Klein.
Thank you, J R. Yes, well, I was going to ask about Planters Field Lane. I know there's that there's going to be Weir River Water System is doing work there. So glad to hear that that's a coordinated effort. Just one question about notifying neighbors and and following up to that. Have have we coordinated with the school department and how this might impact foster or, you know, school drop off pickup times?
We so we've notified the school department that this is on the horizon. The it should not affect school drop off or pickup generally. Although that depends a little bit on the order of construction that National Grid and their contractor choose to choose to work through. I will call the school department separately, just double check the bus routes in if there are any bus routes that go through Planters Field and identify the extent of of parking that occurs on Planters Field at drop off and pickup. And and that may in I'll if once I get a better understanding of that, I will direct National Grid's project manager to make accommodations.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ramsey.
You know, I'd venture to say, having grown up in that part of town, that all of those children are probably walkers. Landers Field is pretty close to Foster as a downer app, but, you know, but definitely I definitely follow up with that. They are, if you don't mind. I would note that the line being replaced goes back to nineteen fifty six. Is that correct?
The one in Planters I believe that's accurate, accurate. Yeah.
Okay, so that's always amazed by how old some of these lines are. But great. Thanks, J R.
Yep, absolutely.
So at this point, is I see Mary Maroney is here for National Grid. Is there anything that you wanted to add?
Good evening. No, J R covered it all. And if you have any other questions, be more than happy to answer them if I can.
So at this point, are there members of the public with comments or questions? And this is going to be both for the Wampatuck Road location as well as the Planters Field Lane location for the National Grid proposed installation work? I am seeing none. So we'll start with the Planters Field Lane project. I am prepared to accept a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately five hundred and thirty five feet of four inch gas main in Planters Field Lane. The gas main in Planters Field Lane will originate at the intersection of Planters Field Lane and Downer Avenue, connecting into the existing four inch gas main and continuing northwesterly in Planters Field Lane to its connection to an existing three inch gas main at twenty one Planters Field Lane. This gas main will replace existing three inch coated steel nineteen fifty six. The age of the abandoned main is sixty six years old. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated February twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Hi.
Bill.
Hi.
And Joe, I it is approved. So when I began this discussion, I spoke specifically about Planters Field Lane. So Bill or Liz, if you have any additional questions on the Wampatuck Road project, I'll I'll ask if either of you have any anything you wanted to add on that. Liz?
Um, no, I'm assuming it's this. Um, no, I'm, I'm assuming it's this, the same process. Um, I guess in terms of, we, I, we didn't really talk about the timeline. Do we know, J R, kind of when, when this is expected to be started and completed?
Well, I would anticipate that, uh, the actual work will most lot likely not begin until, uh, May, uh, at the earliest. And the reason for that is that, um, we are anticipating, um, the Weir River Water Systems Contractor to be mobilizing to Wampatuck, uh, in April. And so depending on, the contractors aren't gonna wanna, uh, work within each other's space and have conflicting, uh, uh, bas- conflicting deliveries and all of the problems that can ensue and delays. So I would anticipate at the earliest, National Grid would begin their work in May. Um, probably towards the end of May and possibly in the June, when all is said and done. And that, and then it would be 10 weeks from that point.
Okay.
There's a reasonable expectation that there may not be a significant amount of overlap with the school year.
Mm-hmm. Okay, great. Thank you.
The only other item that I, uh, wanted to, that I would wanna kind of bring to your attention is that where we are intersecting, um, uh, other streets and they are tying the new main into those streets. Um, I've begun the process of including a, including mention of those streets within the grant of location. And the reason for that is on at least one of our streets, uh, what ended up happening was they were unable to connect their pipe. To, they weren't able to find a, a good piece of pipe to connect to where they had hoped to find that. And so they continued to advance further and further into the street, um, rather than have to, uh, address that after the fact with a separate grant of location. I'm just trying to include a general notice. Will be work in each of these streets and we just don't ne- necessarily know the extent of it until, uh, we find the pipe in the field and determine whether or not it's suitable. So that was my reason for including more of Beach Lane and Beach Road, uh, in the, um, grants of location language.
Okay.
I'm sorry, J R, what, what was that last point? You said, you, you haven't, you don't know where the, where, where the pipe is?
No, no, no. We know where the, the pipe is, but the, sometimes the condition of the existing pipe, where they had intended to terminate the project is in such bad condition that they have to move further up the line
Oh, okay.
to find good location to tap and, 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 um, terminate their project.
Okay, and that's on, that, that's on Beach Lane, Beach Road, not on Nacomis?
Exactly. That's why I'm just mentioning the road, that there may be, you know, some amount of work within the, the layout of those roads as well.
Okay, 'cause Nacomis would, would interfere with bus routes leaving Foster, the only reason why I'd say it. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Bill, any, any other questions?
I know, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, so J R, on the Wampatuck Road packet, did you have that in front of you?
Uh, I do.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is just actually at the intersection, uh, uh, at the, at the beginning of, of Nacomis, there's a note saying to install a two-wire test station. It, it, is that part of this project?
That is part of the project. That is a, um, that test station is basically just leads that they can connect to and run a current through. And it, uh, tells them what the, uh, condition of the pipe in Nacomis is. So it, it gives them the ability to determine whether or not the pipe in the Comus is, uh, structurally sound, basically, for their purposes.
Got it. Um, and this, this is a question from someone who is naive in the, this area. You're installing this two-wire test station, looks like right next to a live gas main, gas main connection. Um, I didn't think you'd want wires right, right where, right where gas main connection is.
Well, they're not, they're not exposing the gas to a, uh, current.
Okay, that's just, just making sure.
Yes.
Um, okay, um, are there any members of the public, uh, with comments or questions? Um, I, I guess I already asked before with, with respect to, um, both Wampatuck Road and the gas main at Nacomis Road or the, uh, Planters Field Lane project? So seeing none, we've already done.
There is one, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is, uh, Kevin, Kevin DeJong?
Yes, hi. Uh, my name's Kevin DeYoung. I'm a homeowner here at the 164 Wampatuck. And I just had a couple of questions. I, I didn't hear explained, um, what the expected service outage was, was expected to be on Wampatuck Road. And I'm also curious about whether or not the work's gonna require access to any of the abutting properties. So for example, uh, is the work gonna involve, you know, digging up someone's lawn or driveways or anything of that nature?
Sure, uh, would you like me to answer that, Joe?
Please.
Yes, so in terms of service outage, uh, the, the service outage that you might experience would be at most on the order of a few hours. Um, what they, the, the construction process that they engage in is they lay down the new line. Then, uh, they'll, then they connect it over and charge it. And then once that's done, they relay all of the service lines over to the new line. And so the only, uh, duration of time that you experience, uh, any downtime is when they're doing that relay over for your house o- on your service. Um, generally, they do not have to go significantly into other properties. Uh, that's usually done, uh, right at the right-of-way. Um, I'm not familiar with their regulations, however, and I believe on occasion, uh, the condition of the actual gas service or the meter may require replacement. But if that were the case, then that's something that they would approach you about directly. And, and that's in a relatively limited number of circumstances.
So, so J R, wha- what I'm hearing is none of the work is intes- is anticipated to be done on private property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
A- and in terms of the outage, you mentioned a few hours. Was that few hours on multiple days or basically i- if it happens, it's gonna be on a, on one day?
It's in, within one day and it's, um, you know, they, they swap them over pretty quickly. And it's my understanding that sometimes they even do them live because of how they're able to manipulate the, the, the main construction.
And, and if power, i- if, if outages are expected, uh, am I correct that the, the affected properties would be notified in advance?
Yes, they, if there was, were an outage, they are required to notify the affected property.
Right, but I, I, I'm just making sure that it happens before the fact rather than after the fact.
Yes, they typically, they would go knock on the door, um, make sure that, uh, the person's aware and it's usually, I believe, they'll, they'll try and do it as a scheduled outage. So they've knocked on the door, "Hey, there's a problem with your service and we'd like to replace it tomorrow. There will be an outage, uh, between this time and this time."
Got it. Kevin, uh, any, any further questions?
No, my, my, well, I, I would say my, my latter question, uh, was raised just because the markings that appear to be on the road now suggest that some of the work is gonna be abutting or if not, actually taking place on some of the properties on the street. So there's a, there's a yellow marking on the road and, and it looks like some of it overlaps with people's driveways or lawns. So that, that's just an observation I've noticed just looking at the street this week.
Well, it's worth noting that the, um, that in some cases, uh, those sections of driveway or lawn may be within the right-of-way. Uh, so that's, uh, one element. And then, um, the second element uh, would be that some of those dig safe marks are only, um, are only there to indicate the presence of existing lines. They are not, uh, necessarily indication of work which will be performed at that location.
Got it. But I think, J R, uh, I, tell me if this is correct, that to the extent that there are, um, you, that there are utility, uh, lines, uh, going through a property, most likely there, there was an easement that that property owner, owner has previously granted that would allow work to happen.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, Kevin, anything further?
I'm down. Uh, nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. And any other, uh, members of the public? I am, uh, seeing none. Um, so Bill, I think, um, Liz has managed to saddle you with the next large, uh, motion.
I think a, a resident has raised his hand, Joe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I did not see that. Oh, there is, uh, David, if you could just give us your full name and your address, please.
Yeah, hi, David Page, 12 Beach Lane. Uh, and I apologize, I'm a little late to get into this and if it's been addressed, uh, don't go over it again. But I'm just a little curious about any access issues with Beach Lane because it's a private road and also a dead end and very small. Narrow, I guess, sorry. I should be more specific.
Uh, J R, do you wanna, uh, discuss the address issues again? I mean, the access issues?
Hi, yes. Um, so basically, um, during those portions of time when they are working directly within, for example, Beach Lane or Beach Road, um, where the access is more difficult, uh, they do, they will generally, uh, provide access to the residents on those streets. Sometimes it takes a few minutes, uh, for them to move equipment out of the way or to move a plate if that's necessary, uh, depending on the exact circumstances, uh, within the roadway. Um, but generally, you will have access. Obviously, uh, the, uh, police detail will also have access by their radio. So if a, an emergency, uh, call comes in and they know that there's an emergency response required, uh, they will tell the construction crew before the emergency vehicles responding, uh, arrive and, uh, prepare, uh, the roadway for the, for emergency access as well.
But it, but J R, just, um, so if, if, uh, someone has a, a doctor's appointment they have to go to the next day, well, that they will be notified in advance if there's gonna be any access issue. Is tha- is that correct?
Well, I would, I think the, the biggest thing is kind of pay attention to the progress of construction. And there, there are, um, usually, there will usually be a representative from National Grid, um, around the site or you can speak with, uh, the, um, the construction foreman, or you can call my office, uh, in the DPW. And I will reach out to them to, uh, assist with any, um, uh, you know, with any assistance that's needed in order to facilitate access as necessary.
Got it. David, anything further?
No, that's all, Shad. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. I will ask once again, any further public comments or questions? Seeing none, um, I think I will make this motion, so I will relieve Bill of the second time. You'd have to do a long motion. Uh, I would move to approve the request of National Grid to install and maintain approximately 2,905 feet of two-inch gas, gas main in Wampatuck Road, 25 feet of two-inch gas main, gas main in Nacomis Road and 175 feet of one-and-a-half inch gas main in Beach Lane. The gas main in Wampatuck Road will originate at the intersection of Wampatuck Road and Planters Field Lane, connecting into the existing two-inch gas main and continuing southwesterly and then northwesterly in Wampatuck Road to the intersection with Beach Lane. The gas main in Nacomis Road will originate at the new main at the intersection with Wampatuck Road, connecting to the existing two-inch gas main in Nacomis Road. The gas main in Beach Road will originate at the new main at the intersection with Wampatuck Road, connecting to the existing two-inch gas main in Beach Road. The gas main in Beach Lane will originate at the new main at the intersection with Wampatuck Road, continuing northeasterly to its terminus at 12 Beach Lane. These gas mains will replace existing 2,905 feet of two-inch, how do you pronounce that? Aldil? J R, what's the wa- way to pronounce that word? A L D Y L?
Aldil. Aldil A plastic.
Okay, Aldil A plastic, 1972, 1977. 25 feet of two-inch coated steel, 1958. 22 feet of two-inch plastic, 1977, and 175 feet of one-and-a-half inch coated steel, 1953, respectively. The age of the abandoned main is between 46 and 69 years old. This approval is subject to the stipulations of the Department of Public Works as outlined in the letter dated February 25th, 2022.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And Joe? Aye. Approved. We now have completed both National Grid projects. J R and, uh, Mary, thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too. Next item on our agenda, uh, was to consider the approval of the petition for, um, from the MBTA to install the MBTA bus system. Infrastructure improvements, um, uh, to improve accessibility at the intersection of Oda Street and Governor Long Road. We are gonna defer that for our meeting taking place in two weeks from today. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of license agreements with the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. And for this, I would call on, uh, Art Robert, uh, Assistant Town Administrator to lead our discussion. And then we will bring in, uh, Tom Warahan and Brianna Bennett.
Uh, good evening, uh, everyone. Thanks for the, the opportunity to present. Uh, I, I'm pleased to, to bring forward, uh, for your consideration three license agreements. If you don't mind, I will share a screen and just kind of jump into the presentation. That will provide, uh, non-exclusive rights to install and operate electric vehicle or EV charging stations at three town-owned facilities. At the South Shore Country Club, 274 South Street, Carson Field, Carlson Field, 28 Bear Cove Park Drive, and at the Station Street Parking Lot at 62 Water Street. What, uh, I, we have a brief agenda. I just want to be sure to orient folks. Uh, Brianna Bennett, uh, of HMLP, uh, her, as their sustainability coordinator will provide background on, on a new initiative that we all worked through together to get to the point of presenting this evening. She'll be backstopped by Alex Benat, who's a manager of EV charging infrastructure at Energy New England. And certainly Tom Warahan, HMLP's general manager, is with us tonight. And he's been tremendously helpful throughout the process. After, uh, Brianna's done explaining the HMLP After, uh, Brianna's done explaining the HMLP initiative and pending her questions, I'll provide a quick review of, of key license terms for a license agreement for each location and look forward to any discussion. With that in mind, I'll, uh, I'll stop sharing and Brianna, by all means, uh, jump in.
Great. Thank you so much. Yes, uh, we're very excited to be here tonight presenting to the Select Board. Um, I'm going to share my screen now as well. Um, so we have a short presentation here that should be visible to you all. Um, so we're going to be talking about the new EV charging stations that were awarded to the Hingham Light Plant through the grant program that is the Mass EV Public Access Charging Program. And so I'll talk more about that in a minute, and then I'll go into the project proposal that we have and the different fee structure, um, that we are looking at, uh, to help cover the costs of those stations. Um, and the objective of tonight's meeting, as Art said, is to get those licenses approved and signed, uh, by the Select Board. So the grant program awarded us $150,000 for six Level 2 charging stations at three town locations. That's the Country Club, the Bear Cove Park area, and the Station Street Parking Lot. Um, and I'll show some visuals of those locations as well. And if you'd like more visuals at the end of the presentation, I'm happy to pull up some maps and, and walk through those. Just let me know. Um, so we received notice of that grant program in December of 2021, and we signed the licenses, and now we're here. Um, we, we signed the contract agreements with the, the state of Massachusetts to get those stations in within the next six months. Um, in February, uh, a month ago, we actually also got notice that we received $175,000 in funding for four DC fast chargers. So there's three kinds of chargers. There's Level Ones, Level Twos, and the fast chargers, Level Threes. Um, we're not talking about Level Threes tonight. We're only talking about Level Twos, but we're very excited to share that news with you all, so I wanted to incorporate that. Um, so the program is a rolling grant program. We're welcome to apply again in the future. Uh, it awards $50,000 per street address and covers 100% of the hardware installation costs. Um, so there are costs that fall outside of that that HMLP is going to cover. Um, and we need to make sure that those stations are accessible 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to be eligible for the program. But there is leeway in that. Um, so as long as they're accessible for at least 12 hours a day, uh, we're good. Um, so, uh, the locations, as I mentioned, are Station Street, the South Shore Country Club, and Bear Cove Park. And so we're going to be installing four of those Level 2 stations that we were awarded instead of, uh, all six. That's because we can't fit the four stations that were allocated to Station Street, um, and we couldn't redistribute those. So they awarded one to Bear Cove, one to the Country Club, and two, and four in total to Station Street. At this time, we're only going forward with two. So that's why from this point on, you're going to hear about four charging stations. Um, so here's some just images of those locations. Uh, you kind of get a bird's eye view as to what the parking spots are going to be that we're allocating for these, uh, stations. Um, and then kind of a sample of what that station might look like. So this is a ChargePoint station. We don't know if we're going with ChargePoint as a manufacturer. We're figuring that out as we proceed in the RFP process. Um, but you can kind of see here at the top of the parking lot, Station Street, is that, uh, street that goes through the middle of the parking lot, behind the bank and the fruit center, uh, in that downtown area. There's a lot of restaurants nearby. Um, and so those, uh, five stations at the top of that lot there are where we, five spots at the top of that lot are where we'd be installing two stations. Uh, here we have the South Shore Country Club, and if you need me to go back to any images, please let me know. Um, at this location, you would drive into the Country Club and take the first left after you get around that bend. Um, and the stations will be located right there. Um, again, we'd only need three parking spots for this location, and we'll only be installing one charger. And then at Bear Cove Park, uh, we have them kind of off-center a little bit. They're to the left when you drive down into the parking lot. Um, you just go down a little bit further than the middle, uh, and it'll be three parking spots at this location as well for one charging station. Um, so the reason that we have that parking allocation is because we need one additional parking spot at each location to make it ADA compliant. So we're going to have an access lane for each location. And so at Station Street, instead of four parking spots for the four ports that would be put in, because there's two ports on each station, you can charge two cars at once at each. Um, we would want five spaces. Uh, same thing with the Country Club. Instead of two parking spots for each port, we would want three spaces, um, the additional one for the access lane, and same at Bear Cove. Um, again, just reiterating, 24/7 public access, ADA compliant. Uh, we'll be installing some protective barriers around them, the bumper guards. Um, I do have an image here. You can kind of see those yellow, uh, barriers. This is a image of the ChargePoint EV chargers at the Cohasset High School. Um, and then we'll be putting directional signage around the parking lot and definitely at the stations, just to let people know these are EV stations, um, and these are for EV parking only. Uh, so we're hoping to charge 20 cents per kilowatt hour at the, at the stations, uh, and that's purely to offset the lifetime maintenance costs. We do not expect to see a payback, um, with that charging fee. Um, if we were to see a fee, a payback, it definitely would not be within the next five years that, uh, we're signing these license agreements for. It's, the, each station is going to have annual fees for, not only their maintenance, but also the software and other things that are not covered in the grant. Um, then rates may also vary based on time of day or year because of, you know, wanting to encourage off-peak charging or discourage on-peak charging. Um, and then we are looking to implement idle fees to make sure that those stations remain open for people that want to use them. So if you're parked at a station, you're charging, it's over, you, you've completed your charging. Um, we want to encourage people to unplug and move out of that station spot so other EV drivers can come in and keep those parking lots flowing. Um, and there would be a 30-minute grace period. It wouldn't be the second you're done charging, we start tacking fees on. Um, but, you know, $3 per hour is about what they'd be paying anyways if they were charging. So we're really not looking to burden people, um, but we definitely want to incentivize movement. And then if a vehicle was parked in the parking space and they were not charging, um, they could be fined $50 as of the Massachusetts State Law, and we are going to be sending some information to the Hingham Police, um, as the chargers get installed and become operational, just to make sure that we're all, um, aware. And then the timeline for this project, uh, basically, we received the grant notice in December. We signed those, um, contracts, got them back in January 4th. Uh, we gathered some information and we presented to the Climate Action Planning Committee in February. We're here presenting to you all tonight. Next week, we're hoping to go to the planning board and secure those parking permits. And then we'd like to start construction by the end of April and get those stations operational by July 4th. That's the deadline that was set by the grant, um, but we can request additional time if it's absolutely necessary. And that's all I have. Um, I am happy, again, to, I have some Google, some Google Maps pulled up if you'd like to see more images, but that's up to you.
Great. Um, so Art, is there any additional presentation that, uh, you'd like to make to the board?
Yes, Joe, thank you. What we've talked about is initiative that's, that's new for Hingham. At, at this writing, we don't have any publicly available electric vehicle charging stations. So this initiative will be filling an important gap. As, uh, we see the rising interest in electric vehicles, uh, these charging stations will, located on town-owned property, will allow for, uh, folks who are, who are buying these vehicles to actually charge them here. As a new initiative, I want, I want to stress that these licenses have enjoyed, uh, input and support from a lot of people. You know, Brianna earlier pointed to wanting to locate these charging stations in specific spots in each, at each property. And, uh, we, we spent time talking with partners here in Town Hall to ensure that there were no issues in that there was a clear path forward, including planning, our, our police department, our DPW, our building, uh, our building department, as well as in the case of, uh, the, the South Shore Country Club, the Country Club Management Committee, all of whom have looked at the sites, looked at the issues, and have provided their support. The three license agreements that will be asking, uh, for authorization to sign also reflect a, a lot of input from John Coughlin, our general counsel, as well as Susan Murphy provided a lot of input from, uh, the, the real estate perspective. And certainly, uh, Tom Warahan's team in HMLP had more than their fair share of input in a collaborative and iterative process. With regard to the license terms, uh, this, this one slide speaks to, to most of them that, that are certainly the most important. As I said earlier, these are non-exclusive licenses. They, they do designate specific spots, but they, but there are other activities, public parking that can happen in the parking lot. We, we determined that a five-year term with a nominal fee made a lot of sense, in part because uh, the EV market is evolving tremendously. Charging technology will be evolving tremendously over time. And at the end of this five-year window, we may all see that we want, it'll be an important, uh, it'll be important to revisit and maybe, uh, change our approach to supporting electric vehicles in the community. We are, we are providing 24/7, 365 access in that, uh, other uses while allowed in the lot are intended to get in the way of people charging, using those charging stations for more than 12 hours at a time. And that's certainly something that we think is manageable. We certainly expect the licensee, HMLP, to meet all, uh, all requirements at all levels, federal, state, and local, as well as meeting grant requirements. Uh, from a standpoint of installing and removing the electric vehicle char, charging station, should that come at the end of a five-year period? The licensee agrees to restore disturbed areas. The licensee indemnifies the town from liabilities. Uh, the licensee bears all permitting costs, but the town waives all permitting fees. So if there are any requirements from our permitting process, the, certainly the, the, the HMLP will, will carry them. And last but not least, these licenses are contingent on, uh, HMLP securing all town, uh, permits. So that we're executing these licenses now. They provide a level of site control, allowing HMLP to go forward with the building department and the planning, uh, and the planning board, uh, to, uh, take the next steps and get from concept in paper to reality, meaning getting, uh, breaking ground and getting these EV start charging stations in place. I guess with that, uh, I think that, that concludes what, what I have to offer. I think we're all open to any questions you may have, uh, with the goal of, uh, supporting your deliberation and decision.
Art, uh, thank you. Uh, I do see, uh, Tom Warahan is on the line, and I give you the floor if there's anything that you wanted to add.
It, no, uh, Joe, thanks for the, uh, the opportunity. Uh, you know, I think this is a great opportunity for the town. You know, $50,000 for each location is significant. It's going to pay for most of the cost of, uh, installing these charges. And, uh, and again, Hingham, uh, Hingham Light is not looking to make, uh, money on these installations. We, you know, we're doing it as a, a benefit for the town, basically. The, uh, a benefit for the ratepayers, and a benefit for those visiting the town, more importantly.
Yep. Um, the, uh, going electric is, um, it is something whose idea has time has come, and, uh, I think we're going to see, uh, more and more of it. So I really appreciate the, uh, the board appreciates, uh, the effort that HMLP is putting into this project. It's, it, it is going to be a benefit to the town. Uh, Liz Klein, questions or comments?
Couple of questions, uh, but thank you for presenting this and welcome, Brianna. Um, I think this is, is great progress for the town, so thank you. Um, one question, you mentioned that the spots would be ADA compliant. Could you just talk a little bit about that, kind of what makes them ADA compliant? I'm assuming they're not handicap spots, but?
Um, they'll, so they'll be handicap accessible, but they will not be designated, um, handicap spots. So, uh, they'll include an access lane. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like, but we do know it needs the additional parking space. Um, there's a couple of different, uh, images and designs that we've seen online. Alex may be able to speak more to, to that aspect of the program. Um, but we're, so we're not positive what they'll look like, uh, but we believe, you know, that you will have the access lane and that they'll be wide enough, um, for wheelchair access and things like that.
Great. Great. And just a question about the, the five-year lease term and, and knowing that the technology is evolving quickly. Is there any risk that it will be outdated within the five years, or is there some sort of program to upgrade?
So, um, we're actually, uh, inquiring with manufacturers right now to make sure that when we sign agreements with them, that any software upgrades or infrastructure upgrades that need to occur on the stations will be included in those plans. So we're hoping any, anything we, whoever we move forward with as our chosen manufacturer for Hingham is going to keep us updated.
Great. Excellent. Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. So, um, so how, how durable are the, are the charging stations? Are they impacted by weather or?
Or bad drivers?
Yeah, I was gonna, I know you, I know you have the posts out in front to protect them.
So, so the posts are there to protect someone backing into the, into the unit. Um, you know, they, they're built to be outside, you know, like a typical, you know, like a gas pump. Um, they're manufactured to be out in the weather and, uh, and then protected as far as weather goes.
So when we, we, when we get, you know, July, we get those not 95-degree temperatures in July, and we get that minus 10-degree wind chill, uh, in January, the charging stations can kind of, are pretty durable, huh?
They're durable. And I, I mean, you know, over the years, I'm, I'm sure there'll be times when things have to be repaired, like anything else, but, uh, we'll have these under a contract with whoever we get them from. And, uh, you know, HMLP won't actually be doing the work to fix them. We'll be, that'll be under contract for someone to come out and repair them.
And, and, and the fees associated with the use. Uh, did I hear you right, Brianna, that you said that they, it goes toward maintenance of the, of the charging stations?
Yes, uh, so more likely, they'll go towards the software, um, the annual software fees that come with the stations. So the prices that we've seen so far range from about $100 to maybe $300 per station. Um, and we have four stations that are going in, so we're expecting it, it could be around $1,200 a year. Um, that's a very rough estimate because it's so dependent on who you go with as a manufacturer. Um, but aside from that, there, you know, if something does happen that's not covered in a contract, which we're anticipating, we will have a pretty robust contract. Um, we're hoping to choose a, a very well, um, uh, a good manufacturer that's going to cover that. Um, so hopefully, you know, it won't be maintenance fees as much, but those software, uh, annual fees are going to be reoccurring. Um, and we, we want to make sure those are covered. Uh, that, I do want to break down the fee structure very quickly. Um, it's 20 cents. Our, uh, rate is 17 cents, and so only 3 cents of that is being allocated towards the, the additional fees that go with the stations.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill, when we plan on having, again, we plan on having a, a, a maintenance agreement with someone, not only for the software, but for the physical locations. You know, if something should go wrong, a cord has to be replaced, a head has to be replaced. We'll have a maintenance agreement with someone to, to take care of all that.
Great. And my, my last question for you is just knowing, um, you know, how much snow we get and how, you know, how the, the, the Station Street Parking Lot is plowed and how crazy it gets down there with snow and ice. Are you going to coordinate with DPW not to block the charging stations with the plows? You know, when they, when they plow out those areas, they tend to, you know, sometimes they don't see, they see the areas, they push the snow up. Was any issues with other communities with blocking snow in or icing those charging stations in?
So, oh, sorry. Um, I, I would say, I would say long-term, uh, we want to make sure that we're not blocking this, we don't leave a snowbank on the stations for a long period of time. Um, however, you know, in, in an emergency, it's not that, it's not going to be critical to get those stations plowed out, um, as compared to, to our, our roadways and, and making sure our emergency facilities are, are, are plowed and everything. Um, and so we, we probably, we do have plans to coordinate with the DPW as well as the Hingham Police on these stations and make sure that everyone's aware that they're going in and have plans in place. But, um, we don't plan on, uh, make, uh, Alex, do you want to speak to, I, the grant mentions, um, making sure the stations are, are plowed out, um, in general, but it's not so much that they need to be prioritized in an emergency or anything like that. And, um, I, I will just say too, for the durability of them in snowstorms, that I can think- Um, I, I will just say too, for the durability of them in snowstorms, that I can think of the nine stations that were installed in Cohasset. Uh, they've been in for over a year now and they fared well in the, in the storm of October. Um, so I feel pretty confident. That the stations are gonna. Do well.
Yeah, and, and I can piggyback onto, so the, the grant requires. That the signage be a certain height. And, and so the, the, basically it'll just say EV charging only and, and through the signage alone, usually that'll cover. Uh, you, you see the big, big yellow ballards and then you see the, the signage and that usually covers that. The grant just treats the stations as a, as a public space. So the stations. Should be treated the same way the parking lot would be treated in priority level, um, for uh, like snow removal. It, it's, it's the, the main requirement from the station, the main pain point is going to be that ADA compliance and Brianna did a great job of explaining how that'll go. So.
Great, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Um, I do have a couple of questions. What, what sort of signage do you anticipate being associated with the, with the stations?
Um, so we were sent some examples by the state, which I'm, I'm happy to pull up. Um, I, I do, should have that. On me. Um, but essentially, you know, they'll just be a, a white sign. It'll say electric vehicle charging station, uh, and then it can have, you know, a time limit listed on it. Um, but we don't plan on putting time limits in. Uh, it could mention, you know, that non, i- if you're not charging, you will be towed. We're not planning on doing that. Uh, we're planning on implementing fees, they could mention that. Uh, so it's something that I think that'll be a collaborative effort to make sure we get what we, what everyone wants on that sign for safety purposes. And for efficiency purposes with keeping the, the stations.
Yeah, the, the, basically what we end up, what we're likely to put is going to be just EV charging only. That's what the sign's going to say. And then that allows the, the, the local police uh entity to, to issue tickets if somebody is, if an internal combustion engine vehicle is, is blocking it so that it keeps that space open. And then the state is also putting in um spaces in highway wayfinding for um, like alternative fuels. And so once this is up and running, they'll probably add that um to any exit that sort of men- mentions Hingham as well.
Uh, Alex, I should have asked you before, if you could just identify who you are and who you're with?
Sure. Um, my name is Alex Benat. I'm the manager of Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure with Energy New England, and we, we work alongside Tom and Brianna for. For managing the Hingham Drives Electric Program.
Great, thank you. We've talked about snow removal. Um. How, how is um. Liability allocated? Somebody hooks up and then their battery in their car blows up. Uh, as, I want to make sure the town is not on the hook for that, uh, but who is on the hook?
The manuf-, so it, it. It's the same thing as if a gas car catches fire at a gas station. It's usually the, the, the driver itself, but. The cars are designed for that not to happen, so that if it does happen, the liability lies on the manufacturer. And, and in the cases that it has happened, that is how it goes down.
Uh, one final question, this actually, Bill, may be a question for you. Do you know how? This proposal will affect the planning board when they do account on the number of parking spots available?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I think it would. I think it might eliminate spots because I, I think it would, um. Yeah, I think it would impact special permanent A threes, I, because.
That's where I'm going, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's going to eliminate spots. So, I mean.
We, but we believe we have to get. We believe we do have to get a, a variance for, um. I think it's uh, the country club in the, um. Carlson, uh, Carlson Field.
Yeah.
We won't need one for Station Street, but those two locations.
You won't need one for Station, because it's a, it's a shared lot with, with a lot of available parking down there. It's kind of a spillover lot that. Lot of, lot of different, you know.
Right.
Yeah, it's go, would, would definitely would occupy spots, so. It would eliminate it, it would impact parking um capacity for the different areas or establishments that would need those spots.
Right, so Tom, where, where I'm going here is not whether you need a variance or, or any relief. It's the extent that others who also claim access to those spots will now be limited in what they can do.
Yep.
And so I, I assume that will be part of the planning board review. And um.
Yes.
I, I just want to make, we'll make sure that we, we are all aware of that there are, you know, sort of secondary impacts. As there are with many projects when we try to get things done, um, which doesn't mean that the project itself is worthy, just ne- means that we need to. To take account of, of the implications. And uh, back to the Station Street lot, I know that the current location. For the planned parking, the, the immediately one is not in the area where the farmer's market. Currently is, is being hosted, uh, but I believe future. Stations may be in that area. Uh, and it's my understanding that by going forward and putting the um. The charging stations in a, in an area currently being used by the farmer's market. That it would not prevent the farmer's market from continuing to be there because it would not disrupt the access for more than twelve hours. Uh, so uh, one of the concerns that we've heard from the public is. You know, make sure that the farmer's market is not put in jeopardy, and it's my understanding that it would not be put in jeopardy. Art, you're shaking your head. It sounds like you agree.
Absolutely, Joe.
Yeah, great. And that's all the questions I've got. Are there any members of the public? With comments or questions concerning uh the proposed license agreements with Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant for the electric vehicle charging station? I am seeing none. I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I make the motion authori- authorize the chair to sign the agreement. With the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant to use a portion of the property located at twenty eight Bear Cove Park Drive consisting of five. Designated parking spaces to install, operate, maintain two electric vehicle stations.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe.
Aye.
Next motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plant to use a portion of the property located at sixty-two Water Street. Consisting of three designated parking spaces to install, operate and maintain one electric vehicle charging station.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. And I'll make the third motion. I'll move to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with Hingham. Municipal Lighting Plant to use a portion of the property located at two seventy-four South Main Street. Consisting of three designated parking spaces to install, operate, maintain one electric vehicle charging station.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, approved. Thank you, uh. Uh, Brianna, Tom, we really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Art, for really help on this project.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a discussion. And vote to confirm approval of the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting warrant article F. Which was the budget discussion that uh happened at our last meeting. Uh, that, that was approved uh to nothing because I was unavailable. To participate, and I wanted to make sure that we have a recorded vote showing that there is unanimous support by the select board. Uh, Tom, anything you'd like to add on that?
Hope, I think you can have the discussion and vote as you, as you see fit.
Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill.
I have nothing to add.
Any member of the public? Seeing none. So I'll make a motion to confirm a recommended education budget of sixty-one million eight hun- eight hundred and twenty-six. Thousand five hundred and three dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. And I will make another motion to confirm a recommended DPW Highway Tree and Park Budget. Of four million three hundred and twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-one dollars.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Next item on the agenda is to adopt and sign the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting warrant. Tom, I will turn this over to you first.
Great, thank you, Joe. Um, so the, and, so annually, when we finish the warrant preparation, we. Present it to the select board for their uh approval and signatures. That's a requirement. And that is what we are doing here. All of the articles have been finalized by the advisory committee. The uh comments uh have been uh delivered and. We are just looking to finalize the, the, to get the warrant signed so that we can send it off to the printer.
And Liz and Bill and I, we have all received, um. What is being proposed for the annual town meeting warrant. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes, you have.
Okay, Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill.
I have no questions.
Are there any members of the public with questions? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion. It's the very, the very last one.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to delay the Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting.
No, 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 it's the very last one on our list.
Uh, oh, sorry, sorry. I'll make a motion to adopt and sign the twenty twenty-two annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe. Aye, we are approved. Next item on our minute, on our meeting agenda is a discussion and potential vote to postpone the twenty twenty-two. Town of Hingham Annual Election and to delay the twenty twenty-two Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty-nine, Section nine. At Tom or Michelle, if you'd like to explain what is being proposed.
Sure. So uh, as we've done the last two years, even though we are now at the tail end of the, of the pandemic, I think we would like to. Encourage as many people as possible to attend uh town meeting and to do that, and to that end, we. At, we are moving or recommending that we move the annual town meeting to April thirtieth, so five days later than the April twenty-fifth. Um, uh, required, that's required as part of the bylaws. And as a result, the original date of the election would have been April thirtieth, but since we cannot hold both on the same day, we have to move. Uh, the election to a date beyond its original scheduled date. Because we are planning an outdoor town meeting for April thirtieth, we also have to have rain dates planned. That rain date, right, the first rain date is scheduled for the following day, Sunday, May first. And with, if the entire weekend, uh, the thirtieth and the first is a washout, and we're unable to hold the meeting, um, due to rain delays. We will, um, we will move the meeting indoors on May ninth to make sure that we can hold the meeting. Prior to the new scheduled election date of May fourteenth. So all of these things are, uh, one dependent on the other. So. In essence, we're moving of the town meeting to May thirtieth. And the town election, excuse me, April thirtieth and the town election to May fourteenth.
Tom, could you explain, um. Which of these items, the election or the me town meeting date requires authorization from the state? And where we are with the state giving the town the authorization to take these actions?
Absolutely. So in order to move the, we have state blanket authority to move town meeting. That is still in place from the pandemic. Um, uh, legislation that has passed in the past, in the past year or so, the. We need new legislation to move our annual election. That's called a home rule petition and has been filed uh back in December with the state. That. Petition is currently being considered and has been signed off on uh as a, as an, uh, an original request by the governor. And sent to the Senate. The Senate, I'm told today, has, um, has approved it and sent it off to the House. The House will consider it. Hopefully in a very quick uh manner on Thursday, we'll get that back. Uh, up to the governor's office for hopefully a very quick signature. He is aware that this is an urgent need. And uh, and hopefully we'll get that signed on Thursday or Friday.
Great. Liz, any questions?
No questions.
Bill, any questions?
Uh, well, if, yeah, I guess my question is, and I probably should ask you before the meeting, Tom. If the legislature hasn't given us approval. To take this act or a home rule petition to be delay our vote. I mean, our, our vote is moved unless they approve it.
So what we're recommending is that your vote be conditioned, and that's the language that's on the vote list, uh, conditioned on the approval of by the state. And what John Cofflin has suggested is, while that is probably sufficient, he recommends that after the state dies, does finalize its approval, we come back. Uh, next week or the week after and reaffirm the vote you'll take tonight without any uh conditions because the legislation would have passed.
Okay, all right, I see, I'd see contingent on, okay, now, so we're gonna, and we're gonna come back and reaffirm it once a.
Yeah, you know, Bill, that, this is going to happen. Uh, I'm not worried about the approval uh happening. Unfortunately, there were significant delays at the, up at the state that caused this, but um. But we need to find a way to let, especially people who are running for office, know when the election is going to be held. They, they.
Totally agree. Totally agree with you. I don't understand what the delay is at the legislature. We've asked about this for months. Um, but I agree with you.
Yep.
Yes, and, and our, our state rep, uh, Joe Muschino has assured us that, uh, this will move forward.
And has, uh, Senator O'Connor's office has been working along with, uh, uh, Joe Muschino's office, uh. Uh, regularly for the last several weeks, so.
Yes.
I'd also like to add another point if I could, um. Real briefly, I also think we as a community should discuss whether or not we want to move town meeting permanently to Saturdays. I'm not going to get to too much detail tonight, but I've just had a lot, tremendous amount of feedback that people prefer having it on Saturday. So I think after this year. We should get with our town moderator and uh. Our leadership to discuss whether or not we want to do it on Saturdays going forward. I think people prefer Saturday to the, to the. The, the confines of a Monday night in April, um. And it's something we should discuss of the community going forward. I think people do like the Saturday. The feel of a Saturday and getting it done all in one day on a Saturday afternoon, but you know, we can discuss that later in the fall, something to put out there.
Yeah, Bill, uh, like you, I've received ver- uh, very strong positive comments about having it uh. On Saturday and quite frankly, also doing it outside.
Same here.
So, but so we will, uh, we will take that up uh at the appropriate time. Are there any members of the public with comments or questions concerning uh the. Annual election as well as the annual town meeting dates? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion first on the uh Town of Hingham election.
All right, I'd make a motion to postpone, we schedule the Town of Hingham Annual Election from Saturday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, from eight AM to eight PM. To Saturday, May fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, from eight AM to eight PM. Contingent upon passage of the Town of Hingham's Home Rule Petition to authorize the Select Board to postpone said election.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye, approved. I will now accept a motion concerning the annual town meeting.
I will make a motion to delay the Town of Hingham Annual Town Meeting from Monday, April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM. Until Saturday, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, at two PM. Outdoors at Hingham High School with rain dates of Sunday, May first, twenty twenty-two, at two PM outdoors at Hingham High School. And Monday, May ninth, twenty twenty-two, at seven PM indoors at Hingham High School. Pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty-nine, Section nine.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye. Approved. I believe that concludes our votes for this evening. Um. Next item on our agenda is appointments, and I do not believe we have any appointments to consider this evening. Next, we turn to public comment. Are there members of the public with comments on items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we move to town administrator, select board reports, and I begin with Tom Mayo.
Sure, thank you, Joe. Um, I just had one I wanted to um highlight, and that is uh, there was an incident, I think a lot of people are aware that we had an excavator uh get stuck in the surf on, over the weekend, uh on Thursday and then through the weekend. That was work that was being done by a contractor on behalf of the state of Massachusetts. Um, so it started at, on Thursday evening around five PM when work crews um, were using an excavator on the beach to straighten one of their crooked steel pilings. And the excavator was in a few inches of water and mud when it got stuck. The crews attempted to use two heavy-duty tow trucks to dislodge it, but were unsuccessful. Uh, the tide was coming in and they were concerned about leaking oil, so they put out one containment boom around the machine. Uh, and then Friday morning, uh, fire department crews were made aware of the issue and found that the excavator was still in the water with the entire cabin body and most of the boom now underwater. Uh Deputy Levinson evaluated the situation and found the machine did not appear to leak any fluids, but wanted to make, to add more booms and absorbent just in case. However, something had let go uh just before doing so, and they found a sheen of oil or other material within the first containment boom. Fire department crews then added a second containment boom and multiple absorbents. Uh, the DEP, the Coast Guard, Harbor Masters and representatives from the construction company were all on scene on Friday afternoon. Uh, the company then brought in clean harbors to attempt to clean the sheen and pump out any other oil or liquids that were in the excavator. And uh, uh, so on Friday night at low tide, uh, they thought uh, they then brought in more equipment and personnel and were able to remove the excavator on Saturday morning's low tide. And the machine was then left on the beach through Monday. Uh, the company that was doing the work will now need to work with the DEP to ensure proper cleanup and disposal of any released contaminants. Just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of the story about what happened there.
Anything else?
Nope. I have one thing when everyone else is done, but come back. Come back to me at the end.
Um, Michelle?
I do have one this evening. Um, so on Friday, I attended a seminar hosted by the Massachusetts Municipal Managers Association. It was the first meeting that they've held in person in two years, and it focused on American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funding and the guidance that was um published by the Treasury, their final rule. So it was good to make some new connections and hear how other communities are using the funding. And we do have our first report on that due in April, so we're staying on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Art.
Nothing more to add, Joe, thank you.
Thank you. Liz.
Uh, nothing to report, thank you.
Bill.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Um, I, I wanted to uh just make a um a sad note. Uh, it, I know it's been reported before that um on, on March eleventh, uh, a cohesive police officer, Mark Jenkins, uh died unexpectedly. Uh, he collapsed while out to dinner with coworkers. Um, they tried to save his life. It, it was unsuccessful. Um, Mark Jenkins, he was assigned to the Criminal Investigative Division and worked as a police computer forensics expert for the Cohasset Police Department and the US Coast Guard Investigative Service. Uh, a number of uh police officers here in Hingham uh knew him both professionally uh and personally, and I just wanted to express our sorrow at his loss. And that, that's all I have for this evening.
Joe, just real quick on that, I just wanted to let everyone know that I was able to, I had the privilege of representing Hingham at that funeral. Uh, it was an amazing turnout, very respectful. Um, he was a heck of a person, a heck of a dad, and a wonderful officer and uh and Cohasset is uh mourning that loss right now, but that was a very impressive day uh over at that uh funeral, the, the turnout they had of all the police officers from the region, so. Um, it was a very moving moment. Uh, and if you don't mind, I'd like to say one last thing, kind of uh bring the mood hopefully back up a smidge as I just want to let everyone know that it is in fact our, our, our erstwhile um chairman's birthday today. And Sharon Perfetti made him a wonderful sign and she wanted me to shine it, to, to show it. So, happy birthday, Joe.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy birthday.
Joe.
Appreciate it.
Good birthday, it's awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll say, Michelle wanted, Michelle wanted us to wear hats, but
Okay.
Michelle, where's the cake?
I would have had my kids make some signs, man.
This has been an interesting, this has been an interesting way an interesting way to celebrate my birthday, so. Uh, thank you all, very much appreciated. Uh, and with that, uh, I am looking forward to a motion to adjourn so I can spend what remaining hours of my birthday uh with my wife.
There you go.
Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And Joe, aye.